Good evening. I will call to order our March 11th, 2025 city council meeting. We will start the meeting off with our invocation by Ann Woodward. So if Ann Woodward would like to come to the podium, and if everyone would like to please stand with me.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'd like to call us in to knowing that there's one presence, one universal force, that works through all of us, through this wonderful city, through the council members and all present here tonight. I call that Presence God. And I know that this meeting is absolutely held in perfect harmony, knowing that each person that speaks, speaks well for this very moment in time. I am honored to say I thank you for this honor, and also thank God for the presence that is providing here for this evening. And I say thank you, and amen.
Amen. If you can please remain standing, and if Scouting America Troop 148 would like to come to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please face the flag. If in uniform salute, if not, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 148. You are dismissed. All right, Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander, here. Mayor Kalfis?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
We will start tonight's meeting off with our presentations. The first one is a Certificate of Achievement to Scouting America Troop 384 for the Hundredth Eagle Scout. If you would all like to come to the podium, I will meet you down there while Madam City Clerk reads off the certification.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Today is a special day because Scouting America Troop 384 has actually achieved the unique distinction of having 100 of their scouts earn the rank of Eagle Scout. So come on up. And then, and on top of that, we have the Hundredth Scout with us. Luke Picardia is also with us. So let me go ahead and read both of these certificates. The City of Temecula congratulates Scouting America's Troop 384 for their service and dedication to the community. Troop 384 is chartered by Grace Presbyterian Church in Temecula and led by Scoutmaster Andy Voight. Over the past 25 years, Troop 384 has earned the unique distinction of having 100 scouts earn the rank of Eagle Scout. The City of Temecula extends our heartfelt appreciation for the thousands of hours of service to the community and wishes Troop 384 continued success in their future endeavors. In addition, we congratulate Luke for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. Luke's Eagle Scout project was aimed at creating a United States Veterans Memorial and properly lighting the flag at Grace Presbyterian Church. We are proud of Luke's accomplishment and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future. And with that, I know, Mr. Mayor, we would love to hear from both the troop as well as Luke.
Who would like to go first, Luke or the troop? We would love to hear some words from you. Right here, the mic's right behind you. Or you can hold this, wherever you want.
Well, I can say that becoming an Eagle Scout is no easy feat. It is a special honor and distinction that shows your progress through boy scouting as well as your achievements through life. And it proves that you have the ability to not only lead yourself but lead others. And this is an honor that not many people have. And many of important people also hold this honor, such as Neil Armstrong, the first man to walk on the moon, and a few of our presidents. It is a true honor, and I feel very, very honored and happy. And it leaves a great legacy. And I hope that many people after me are able to become Eagle Scouts as well. And that's all.
Well said, Luke. I'll present to you this first, this Certificate of Achievement right here for you, if you want to grab onto that first one, and also your Eagle Scout pin here. And then while we're snapping a few photos, we would love to hear from Mr. Vell.
Okay. Thank you so much. I know that you guys have been involved in scouting. You've hosted many troops doing the flags for you here. There's been many different festivities throughout the city where the scouts have participated. These young men that stand before you, just a small sampling of the 100 that we've achieved, have all put their heart and soul into their community. I couldn't be prouder than each and every one of them having them here with me today. It takes a huge village to support these scouts. And Troop 384 has the best adult volunteers that you could ever want. And because of that support, these scouts are able to accomplish the things that they're aiming for and reaching. So thank you.
I think a few of my colleagues have some words they would like to say to you all.
Just real quick, I just want to congratulate you on this amazing award. And I just want to also tell you, you are such a well-spoken young man. It's incredible to hear your wisdom and your knowledge already. So continue to do what you're doing because you're on the right road. So thank you for being inspiring to others, and you're going to do great things.
He's a tough act to follow.
Just real quick, thank you for all the service you provide to the City of Temecula and our communities as well. It's a strong presence that's been felt for many years, and appreciate all the hard work and dedication, especially you, young man. You know, doing what you do for our community goes noticed, and we appreciate that.
So I'll go ahead and go. I'm glad you used the word legacy. So scouting has just a very powerful legacy in American history. But Temecula also has a very strong scouting legacy. And you mentioned it in your remarks, and the amount of scout troops and just scouts that are here in our city, and all the service projects, and all the things that you do in our community to make it a better place. It really shows, and it really creates a place that we can all be proud of, and we can all call home. And you're a huge part of that. And you all are a huge part of that. So thank you.
And for those who don't know, which is probably everybody, I've been cutting Luke's hair since he was a wee little boy. And so when I heard he achieved Eagle Scout, I said, we gotta get him in here. And so hence this ceremony. So thank you, Luke, for making my job easier. You know, as elected officials too, we need people like you guys. You guys who understand government, understand structure, understand leadership. And you guys are all going to be fine leaders one day. So thank you. Thank you, Luke, for being here, and see you next time.
Well, like my colleague said, congratulations, Luke. Congratulations to all of you. It's an honor to have you here, and we're happy to present you with these certificates. We'll take a few photos and wrap it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We got room on this side, guys.
While they're taking that photo, I just wanted to make another remark. I think there's like six degrees of separation between Stu's cutting someone's hair and like everyone in Southern California. Pretty sure. It's always a story.
And next up, we have our presentation by Matt Capeludo regarding the fentanyl epidemic protecting our community. Mr. Capeludo, will you want to come to the stand here? Good evening.
Good evening. Am I good to go? All right. Thank you. Mayor Kalfis, council members, and members of the community. Five years ago, I stood here as a grieving father, just weeks after losing my daughter Alexandra to fentanyl poisoning. That night, I knew two things. This crisis was deadly serious, and urgent action was needed. That remains true today. Fentanyl is still taking lives at an alarming rate. Back then, I wasn't just speaking for Alexandra. I was speaking for Jacob Alexander, age 20, Caleb Dunlap, age 17, Dylan Perez, age 21, and my daughter Alex, age 20, all from Temecula, all lost to fentanyl, just days apart in December 2019. And I'd like to acknowledge my good friend and peer, friend of my wife and I, Donna Slusher. She came to support me here tonight. She lost her son Dylan one week before we lost our daughter Alex. Fentanyl is now the leading cause of death for Americans age 18 to 45. I want that to sink in for just a moment. Number one cause of death for Americans age 18 to 45, more than car accidents, more than gun violence, more than disease. And these are preventable deaths. Nearly every seven minutes, someone in this country dies from fentanyl. Yesterday, my wife and I attended the funeral of another young man, a former Great Oak High School student, just 27 years old. Another family shattered, another life stolen, another urgent reminder for action. We must face a hard truth. Just say no is no longer enough. Social media has made drugs more accessible than ever, with dealers preying on young people. Counterfeit pills and laced substances turn experimentation into Russian roulette. Many of us may have experimented in our youth, but today, one bad choice can be fatal. Five years ago, when my daughter was killed, her death, like all drug-related deaths in Riverside County, was initially ruled noncriminal. But today, because of relentless advocacy and Sheriff Chad Bianco's leadership, every fentanyl-related death is investigated as a potential homicide. Riverside County District Attorney Mike Heston was the first in the nation to file murder charges against fentanyl dealers, setting a precedent nationwide. Thanks to his leadership, Riverside County is leading the charge to hold dealers accountable. A key part of that accountability is now Alexandra's Law. After years of roadblocks in our state legislature, voters passed it as part of Prop 36. It took effect December 18th, 2024. This law ensures that individuals convicted of drug offenses receive a formal warning. Drugs kill. If your actions lead to someone's death, you can be charged with murder. It's molded after a similar DUI warning that has helped curb drunk-driving fatalities. The goal: prevent tragedy before it happens and hold repeat offenders fully accountable when their actions result in death. This law doesn't just target major traffickers. It applies to anyone in the drug trade, whether selling, manufacturing, or even sharing drugs with friends. If a death results, you can be charged with murder. I urge community members to learn about Alexandra's Law by going on our website, alexandraslaw.info. The more people who know about Alexandra's Law, the more lives we save. And we must shift the stigma. Too often, fentanyl victims are blamed for their own deaths. Many assume that they chose this fate. But I assure you, my daughter did not choose to die. As a teenager, Alex was diagnosed with what is known as major depressive disorder, which sometimes led to self-destructive choices. Two days before Christmas in 2019, Alex made the mistake of purchasing what she thought was a prescription painkiller. But it wasn't an evil choice. The evil choice was made by the man who profited off her life, selling her a counterfeit pill made with a lethal dose of fentanyl. His motive was one thing: greed. That's where the stigma should be, not on the victims, but on the predators knowingly poisoning vulnerable people for profit. Selling counterfeit pills packed with fentanyl is not drug dealing. It's murder. So what can Temecula do? To reduce fentanyl deaths in our city, we must focus on three key areas. One, accountability. The sheriff's department and district attorney's office are committed to prosecuting fentanyl dealers. This enforcement is saving lives. Two, and what I believe is most important, education. We must take responsibility for educating our children before it's too late. A recent study in the American Journal of Drug and Alcohol Abuse found from 2015 to 2023, a staggering 1,194% increase in fentanyl exposure among children under the age of 19. I've spoken at every high school in Temecula, but only during evening events with voluntary attendance. And I'll tell you, the attendance is sparse. This critical education must be prioritized during school hours, not just as an optional after-hours event. It should be an annual requirement until this crisis is no longer an epidemic. Our schools need to provide education that compels students to confront the harsh realities of today's drug landscape, because they deserve this knowledge. Third, mental health. Many young people turn to substances to cope with depression, anxiety, trauma. We need stronger mental health support to help kids before they self-medicate. Intervene early, and we save lives. I'll conclude with this statistic from our city. From 2019 to October 2024, 104 drug-related deaths were recorded in Temecula, 61 due to fentanyl. And I believe one more victim should be counted. The father of a young victim who consumed by grief took his own life. These are not just numbers. They are our sons, our daughters, our neighbors, our coworkers, our friends. We cannot become numb to this crisis. That which we tolerate becomes the norm. But there is nothing normal about losing a child. Alexandra grew up here. She went to school here. She was part of this community. At the time of her death, she was studying social work because her dream was to help others. God knows she's done that now. It's only fitting that this fight continues right here where she lived and loved. I urge this council: champion fentanyl education in our schools. Expand outreach so every family in our city understands the risks. And support mental health initiatives to stop substance abuse before it starts. And I urge every community member to visit alexandraslaw.info and share it. Temecula can lead the way. Together, we honor Alexandra's legacy and prevent more families from suffering this loss. Thank you.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to come up here and speak to us today. I can't even imagine what you've been through with your family and Mrs. Slusher. I can't imagine what you've been through. And I know I speak for all of us when our hearts go out to you. But what you've done since that tragic accident is remarkable, and how much you fought, not only in Temecula but at our state level, to get Alexandra's Law involved and into Prop 36. And then Prop 36 ultimately passed, you know, this past December. That's something to be proud of. And it's not easy to do, especially when a tragic thing like that happens to your family, to bounce back and find good out of that negative situation. But I mean, the fentanyl crisis is real, and it's here. And you know, we sit up here and we portray, you know, very beautiful and loving Temecula because it is, but there's also a lot of negative that goes on that our police officers and our sheriffs and our firefighters see every day. And we do our best to hide that and sweep it under the rug. And we put it on the backs of, you know, those sheriffs and those firefighters and the families. But there's real stuff that happens like you're talking about today, and we need to fix that. And I completely agree. And I think your presentation would have great benefit in front of the school district as well. And I know you said that you spoke in front of there, but I think the school board would be a great place because education is key. And those are the ones that would be able to implement that sort of education into our school system here in Temecula. But I have one question. You mentioned fentanyl poisoning. And how come you call it fentanyl poisoning rather than an accidental overdose?
Thanks for asking that question. I will never say my daughter died of a drug overdose. And there are actual drug overdoses, and those are tragic themselves. But let me explain what this era of fentanyl and synthetic drugs has done that we never saw until recently. I'm going to read part of what the defendant in my daughter's case pled guilty to. And then you could tell me if that fits the definition of an overdose, or does it sound like a poisoning? This is part of the confession he signed. On the night of December 22nd, 2019, Alexandra Capeludo asked defendant if he could sell her Percocet pills, a prescription painkiller. Defendant agreed to sell Alexandra Percocet pills. Defendant drove to Alexandra's home in Temecula, California, and sold her what turned out to be approximately 11 counterfeit oxycodone pills that he later described to law enforcement as blue oxies or M30s. Defendant knew it was illegal for him to sell the pills and that they contained fentanyl or some other federally-controlled substance. Upon going to bed the night of December 22nd, 2019, Alexandra Capeludo ingested half of one of the pills. The fentanyl entered her system, poisoning her body, and caused her death. Had Alexandra received an actual Percocet pill, and no parent condones their child purchasing pills illegally, but had it been a Percocet pill, she's alive today. She was poisoned, and that is how so many of our young people are dying.
Thank you for that. I think that needed to be heard. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions for Mr. Capeludo? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Oh, wait, Matt. Hold on. Good to see you. Thank you for coming, by the way. I just had a quick question for you. When was the last time or were you ever able to approach the city council or the city of the school board and present this to them?
Thanks for asking. I recently had a young lady, God bless her, from Great Oak High School, just a freshman, who heard of our story, and this really resonated with her. And she's involved in the ASB there. And she got involved, and she coordinated a meeting with her, myself, her mom, and the vice principal of Great Oak High School. They were excited to actually put together an assembly in front of the entire school. This was maybe about a month, two months ago, we started planning this. I just got notification a day or two ago that, for whatever reasons, they can't make it a full school assembly this year. They'll shoot to do that next year, but asked me to go to one of the Saturday classes, you know, where kids go if they've gotten in trouble or have to make up work. So you know, that's the kind of... Those are the challenges we face. People, you know, that's better than nothing. And I'll go speak there and hopefully connect with somebody. But people have to understand also, this isn't just affecting your Saturday school kids who, you know, might have some behavioral issues or something. My daughter was an honor roll student. This can be anybody's kid, from that kid who might be getting in trouble to the most perfect, I know that we're here, the boy scout in the country. It's affecting everyone. And our youth deserves this knowledge.
So the reason I bring that up is just recently, over the last few months, I think since about October time, I've been working with staff, number one, to bring education to our city directly about fentanyl. And can we get in the hands of everybody as well, Narcan, and how to use it correctly? Because I think it's very vital. The county itself, the state, just gives it freely because of the situation that we're in. Businesses, nonprofits, are really going to thrive getting this. God forbid somebody shows up and has an overdose, a poisoning. I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly. But I say this as well because myself and Brendan are on the city school board subcommittee. So I don't know if you'd be willing to go to the school board and maybe see what they can do with it. You have wonderful council or you have wonderful members there who I'm sure would get behind you. And if there's something that maybe we can do together collaboratively, we can always look at that as well, because we understand the importance of this and the education.
Absolutely.
So you have our support 100%.
Thank you. And I want to mention real quick, I was part of a 20-minute documentary filmed a few years ago, made specifically for high school-age kids. It's called Dead on Arrival. Any parent, community members that have kids going through school right now, I encourage you to go on YouTube, Google Dead on Arrival, put in the word fentanyl, so you get the right film. It's only a 20-minute documentary. But that film will resonate, and it will educate our parents and our youth on the dangers of this drug, this very real and deadly drug landscape. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question for you. I just want to say thank you for coming tonight. Your message is important. You've been to hell and back. Your family's been to hell and back. Many other families have been to hell and back through this. It was an honor to stand with you and many other elected leaders up and down the state. That must have been mid '23, I'm guessing, somewhere in there. It's been a couple of years. It was really frustrating to see the logjam in the state, right? This is, and I shared this with you before the meeting, this is a simple vote. It's a yes. You had 40-some-odd cosponsors on this bill across the political spectrum. For it to get to a proposition and pass overwhelmingly should send a message that this is important. We value this. And just keep fighting, Matt. Keep fighting.
Appreciate it. Appreciate all of you for the time. Thank you. Now we have work to do.
Definitely.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Moving on to our Board and Commission reports, we will start off with our Community Services Commission, Commissioner Hogs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and residents. My name is Dr. Ewan Hogs. I'm honored to serve as the chairwoman of this commission. It is my pleasure to provide you with an update from last night's meeting. I have the privilege, previous slide, please. I have the privilege of working alongside some exceptional commissioners, Ernie Castrol, Jeff Kingsburg, Cassie Sizemore, and LaSalle DeGrave. As an advisory commission, we focus on topics related to parks and recreation services. Next slide. First, we received an update from Parks Superintendent Stacy Fox. For the Adopt a Park program, 16 parks have been adopted by various volunteer groups to facilitate... by various volunteer groups to facilitate the beautification of our parks. A brand-new dog agility course was just installed at the Mike Nogar Community Park. Eagle Source Splash Pad had a water pump replaced and is set to open later this month. Meadows Park will be closed for two weeks later this month for playground resurfacing. We have exciting news from Ronald Reagan Sports Park. New playgrounds are coming soon and are currently in the design phase. In special events, we were thrilled to see our recently retired library manager Rosie Vanderhug being recognized for over 50 years of service. It was fitting to dedicate the library community room in her honor. Our community was very excited about the grand opening of the pickleball complex with 300 Eagle residents showing up to try the new courts. Next slide. Moving on to the Temecula Valley Museum, I'm pleased to report a 32% increase in total attendance compared to the same month prior year with over 2,500 patrons visiting the museum last month. I am a man has been the highlight showcasing powerful photographs of the city's civil rights movement. Culture Day continues to be a popular event with 350 participants celebrate Mongolian. We were also honored to have Amber Vale visit the museum. She is the great-great-granddaughter of Waterville of the Vale Ranch family. Next slide. Lastly, we received a comprehensive budget engagement session from the finance director, Jennifer Hennessy, and her team. She also conducted a real-time survey regarding community satisfaction. Our commissioners continue to engage actively with the community, and their dedication is truly inspiring. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to our traffic safety commission with Commissioner Maddox.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, neighbors. Good to be with you all tonight. All right, the Temecula Traffic Safety Commission meets on the fourth Thursday of each month to review topics related to traffic safety, education, engineering, and enforcement. And our team includes Commissioner Larry Schlesser, Vice Chair Skip Carter, JR Richardson, and myself. At our last meeting, we approved our prior action minutes with a unanimous vote. Next, we were joined by Director Hennessy and her team for our version of the budget engagement session. As you would probably expect, they did an excellent job, as usual, taking a very complex topic and presenting it in a very approachable way. During the commission comments, one sentiment that came up repeatedly was an appreciation for the council's commitment to long-term fiscal stewardship. And that's evident not only in the city's reserve accounts, which are still fully funded, but also in the city's approach to asset management, five-year forecasting, and of course, the debt pay-down strategy. And so I look forward to seeing the full version of the report at the City Council Budget Workshop coming up later this year. Next, we reviewed some safety concerns at the north side of Meadowview. So the city's traffic engineers have come up with sort of a refresh for the corner where North General Kearney meets Caye Pinocolata. The new design includes an updated striping as well as raised and reflective signage, which we hope will prevent some of the roadway departures by also helping drivers better perceive and navigate that turn. And then lastly, we reviewed school area traffic circulation at Gardner Middle in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. So the school district currently posts a crossing guard at the intersection of Loma Linda, Redwood, and White Sage. And that's where there's the highest concentration of pedestrian crossing. The idea there is that we'd like to create a safer route to school. And so staff and commission are recommending that the city council adopt high-visibility crosswalks protected with an all-way stop. I'd also like to highlight just two relevant California vehicle code laws that are especially pertinent to this item. First is that cars are prohibited from parking in the bike lanes when you visit during school pickup and drop-off hours. You see a lot of kids on their bikes. And we just want to make sure that that bicycle infrastructure that's there is available to them. And second is a brand-new state law that was just put on the books this year, which prohibits parking within 20 feet of a crossing, whether that crossing is marked or not. And again, the purpose of that is not to be punitive. It's just to maintain a safe line of sight from road to road, but also between the cars and our younger pedestrians. So that recommendation advances 4-0, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Scene nine, we will move on to our public safety report with Chief Crater.
Good evening, Mayor, council members in Temecula. Give you the report for February of this year. Our firefighters responded to 846 calls in the city. Of those calls, 14 were fires, 56 were traffic collisions, and 636 were medical emergencies. And that brings us to a total for the year of 1,831 calls. Next slide. Another thing to mention, Career Day. We had a career day at a couple of schools in Temecula. Obviously, we enjoy this, getting out into the community, talking to the youth, and hopefully steering them to a fire career. We're always hiring, CalFire. We have several job openings. So if anybody is interested, please go to CalFire's website and apply. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you very much. Moving on to our public comments, non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments on non-agendized items. The first commenter is Jeanette Chun, to be followed by Kathy Bolinger. Each speaker has three minutes, and the balance of the rules are addressed in the agenda. Welcome, Ms. Chun.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Do I have to push something for it to show?
They'll go ahead and play it.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you so much, council, for having me tonight. I'm really grateful to be here, and welcome back, Councilmember Ron. My name is Jeanette Chun, and I'm the CEO of Birth Choice Centers, your local pregnancy resource center. And we are here to support people facing pregnancy, parenting, and reproductive health concerns. Annually, we have a 5K Run and Walk for Life, and it's going to be held at Lynnfield Christian School on March 22nd, 2025. We hope to see you guys all there. This is an incredible way for us to be able to raise some funds to support all of our amazing clients that we serve. And it's an incredible amount that we're serving lately. We've actually tripled again in the number of clients we've served. We're now open four days a week because of it. Thank goodness, we're receiving enough funding to do so. But normally, on a daily basis, we're serving anywhere from 15 to 30 clients every day. It's just been unbelievable so far. In the last year, we had handed out over 200,000 items to our clients as far as daily care items, diapers, wipes, formula, clothing, and other items that they need. We're very pleased to be in Temecula, and we hope that you guys will come out and support us and continue to enjoy us being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
And our final speaker is Kathy Bolinger.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. All right, good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and community members. My name is Kathy Bolinger, and I'm the vice president of the Friends of the Temecula Libraries. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. It is my pleasure to invite you and the community to our annual mega sale to be held this Friday and Saturday, March 14th and 15th. The sale will be set up in the community rooms at the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library located at Palma Road. Our doors will be open from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM each day. At the sale, you'll find thousands of gently-used books of all genres, for all ages, DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, and other items on sale, all for 50 cents each. This is our largest sale of the year, attracting hundreds of patrons from across the county to shop our bargain books. A little more information about the Friends. Our volunteers operate two bookstores in Temecula, one at the Temecula Public Library and one at the Grace Millman Community Library. Our merchandise is donated by the public, and the funds we raise go directly back to the libraries. For example, we provide for all the programming that the libraries offer, from early-age storytimes to summer reading, teen, STEM, and adult programs. We also supplement library collections by purchasing thousands of dollars' worth of books and other materials throughout the year. As you are aware and no doubt want to ensure, our libraries are vibrant, heavily-trafficked, and much-loved centers for our community. We are proud and grateful to support them and all that they offer our residents. That said, I hope that you get a chance to come and join us this Friday and Saturday and help us support our libraries through your purchases. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you. Moving on to our city council reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Stewart.
Right, we have a slide for the Rod Run. So it actually, I think it's May 2nd. Is the, is that the Friday?
Yes, Rod Run is the first Friday, and the cruise night is the first Friday in May, but the registration opens March 18th.
Right. So, but May 2nd will be the coolest cruise night in Temecula of the year. It's, to me, this is the Fourth of July for me. I'm a car guy, as you might not know, but I have plenty of classic cars. So this is one of my favorite things to do in the whole wide world. So if you want to cruise, you got to make sure you sign up because we only have like 300 spots. And so you better get online quick because we sold out the Rod Run in, what, one day?
Sorry, all the spots on Front Street went immediately, and then the remainder sold out over the next day or two.
Okay. So it's definitely one of those events we all look forward to, and it's such a cool night. And what's really cool about the cruise night is it seems like it's mostly local residents. So when you're down there watching these cool cars go by, it's usually a neighbor or a friend or somebody is standing right next to you. And I would highly recommend, if you show, is take a walk down Front Street and just, and you'll be surprised how many people you come across that you'll know. So it's just one of those events that really kind of brings our community together. So please sign up, and only 300 spots, so you got to get there quick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron?
Sure, I have one slide. Stop stealing our mail. You know, I just, of the things I'm tired of, it's this one. Mail theft in Temecula has become a ridiculous problem and one that, you know, a lot of residents deal with in a very serious way. We got together with the folks, our local mail representatives, Congressman Isa's office, staff, and the Sheriff's Department to address this issue. And, you know, we learned, I think collectively, a lot of interesting things. One of those was, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but part of the reason why mail theft has become so prevalent is because the boxes are easy to break into. Part of the reason the boxes are easy to break into is because of the locks that the mail service uses on them. And, you know, we asked, well, why are you using such weak locks? And they said, well, because the old lock is no longer manufactured. The stunning part about, for those of you who had to struggle with this, why does it take so long to get your mailboxes fixed? It's because the federal government only contracts with one locksmith in the entire nation to provide those replacement locks. And the city of Temecula, I think, has a back order of over 100 requests. This is just a stupid problem to have. And so we, you know, said, what can we do as a community to help solve this? One of those is to, you know, petition for the actual good locks to be used again. Don't know why we went cheap. But also enhance security, working with, you know, our local HOAs and those folks who, you know, have responsibility for the large mailboxes and so forth in neighborhoods. You know, we're looking at and putting together some recommendations on that so that communities can better prepare themselves and deal with the security measures. Another important feature is, you know, a lot of what we hear is either neighbor-to-neighbor or, you know, posted on social media. And you know what our cops don't do is they don't scroll through social media to find crimes. It would be great if you all, when these happen, report them because I think everybody kind of looks at each other and says, you know, somebody else is going to report this issue. And oftentimes, what I've found in our neighborhoods is that nobody ends up reporting it. It's really hard for law enforcement to do their job, to do investigations and law enforcement actions if they can't figure out what the patterns are and the information. So my understanding is that the city has now launched a, correct me again, Mr. City Manager, launched a new platform on the city app and the city website to make reporting a whole lot easier?
That's correct. So you can go to the city app, you can find reporting mail theft. It'll walk you through sort of the appropriate channels on the non-emergency line to RSO directly. And that is one of the important things. And I think the information's also on the city's website. So you can report through either way.
Great. And then, so you'll be seeing more from the city on this. You know, again, it's so funny when you start having these conversations and everybody says, oh, the city doesn't really have a role because it's federal jurisdiction and so forth. No, we absolutely have a role, and we're, you know, going to be rolling out a lot of additional measures to help the community stay safer and protect our mail from theft. One of the other sort of longer-term things that came out of that meeting, which I thought was interesting, was a conversation about who actually enforces this and who the mail investigators are. And there's not a lot of them in Riverside County. And obviously, they're overwhelmed with the amount of, you know, activity there actually is. The only folks who can prosecute this as a felony and actually have a serious prosecution is the federal attorneys. The state has very limited role in this. And according to sort of current state law, the state's only action, and which includes, I think, our local law enforcement action too on this, is simply a misdemeanor. And again, our sheriff's folks are in the back. Am I getting that right again? Yeah, it's just a misdemeanor, so a citation more than anything else. I'd like to, as part of our public safety agenda for legislative action with the council, recommend that we sort of push back to our legislature director and city manager's office to work with the League of Cities and our legislators and our lobbying firm to move that from misdemeanor to a felony. Then our district attorney can actually take these cases and prosecute them effectively because enough is enough. Anyway, so I just wanted to report out and say we're actually doing something about this, and I hope to see some good success soon. But please, see something, say something. It's everybody's responsibility to kind of participate in this. And it's the best way we can get for law enforcement and others to take corrective actions. Anyway, that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a couple of slides? If you could just put the first one up. So I just wanted to thank Temec Elementary School for the invitation. Also thank my colleagues and other members of the community that came out to read for Read Across America Day at Temec Elementary School. I was talking with my wife about this, and they've been doing this for at least 10 years. I've had some photos of, you know, past councils there doing their thing, past staff members reading in classes. So this was a great, great day. I had an opportunity to read in Mrs. Gutierrez's TK class. I absolutely just love the TKers. They're like the sweetest kids ever. Every year, they'll usually write letters. And this one student, Amber, wrote this letter that I just had to share. And she's not able to fully write this herself, so she dictates it to the teacher, to an adult. But it's funny, it says, "You read great." I'm like, "Thanks, Amber." And she's like, "I like your hairstyle. I like your style. Did you write that book? I like your hair." So Amber, thank you. I appreciate that. It was an absolute honor to come and read with you, and I look forward to it next year. And again, I thank my colleagues that went there that day and any staff members that read. It's just a really impactful day for us as government officials and government employees and staff members to reach out into the community and touch lives in a real important way. So that was a fun day at TES. Next slide. And while I don't have a collection of old cars, I am a bus guy. I also don't have a collection of buses, but I do enjoy them. So there used to be an RTA route from Temecula to San Marcos, right? So it was, I think it was a 217. Ridership was pretty low. Most of the route was in San Diego County. So it was really difficult for Riverside County Agency to run a route in San Diego. But thanks to Sandeg, they're exploring the options of But thanks to Sandeg, they're, they're exploring the options of creating this new rapid 483 bus route. So there's a meeting tomorrow, and nothing against Sandeg, but there's not really an easy way to sign up for this, so there's no QR code. You have to go to their profile and click on the link in their bio. Maybe in the future, they could figure something out that bring us into the 21st century with technology, but this is an online meeting, really connecting students with Cal State San Marcos that live in Temecula. I will say, when I was doing my undergrad at Cal State San Marcos, many of the students, in fact, a majority of each class, there were students from Temecula that were there. So providing a, a stable rapid bus route there would be really beneficial, and I just want to thank Sandeg for hosting that meeting, and I'm hopeful that this route will actually materialize because I do know that it would, it would benefit our community. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
All right, if we can first please bring up the TVE2, I'd appreciate it. Excellent. So I just wanted to highlight one of my slides here today, just recognizing the fact that within our community, we have such an outreach to businesses, not even just here in our city, but beyond that, to have access to free workshops, to be able to improve your business, to be able to grow. As you can see here, they have this stuff under Leadership, Discover Leadership, Essential Wage and Hour Updates, How to Launch Your Small Business, Entrepreneurial Superpower. A lot of great classes are coming through here. So if you haven't had an opportunity to really get to know the TVE2, maybe you're a business, maybe you're even thinking about starting your own business, as I'm seeing young ladies and gentlemen over here, you know, who knows? Maybe one of you guys has a great mind to want to be able to do something here in the community and build a business, and this might be a great place to connect. But I just want to talk a little bit about what they do. They support local entrepreneurs. The Temecula Valley Entrepreneurial Exchange, TVE2, is a city-owned and operated business incubator and a regional entrepreneurial resource center dedicated to fostering business growth and innovation in our community. They have free business resources, and it provides year-round business and workforce training events such as workshops and programs, all offered at no cost to participants. Looking at the March workshops, as we discussed, TV, TVE2 is hosting four impactful workshops to support the local entrepreneurial and business owners. These sessions cover leadership development, business compliance, strategic planning, and small business fundamentals. All workshops are held in person at TVE2, and if I don't know if I already said it, but they are free. So definitely something to take advantage of. Also, I just want to encourage as well that if you are a veteran, that there are a lot of options over there as well for veterans. So I just want to encourage you to take a step over there, maybe go online, see how this can help and impact your business if that's something you're interested in. So slide number two, please. All right, everybody knows public safety for me is number one, and I always, I always want to take a look at how we can be prepared. And as our chief gave me the, the slogan today, "A prepared community is a safe community." And I absolutely agree 100% with that. So one of the things here, I just wanted to again highlight, I think it's important for us as a community to know what's out there, how we can get involved in different things, but also how can we be prepared for our homes, our businesses? So over here at the temeculaca.gov- OEM or backslash OEM is the website to go to just to get information as far as how and what we are doing here as a city, how you as residents, your home, your businesses can be prepared for any natural disasters such as wildfires. You can also join the Temecula Citizens Corps, Temecula Alert. If you haven't already done that and connected on your phone, you get alerts for anything that comes down the pipeline if we have to share information to you. Remember, communication always goes down first in an emergency. So also, that being said, we want to make sure that you guys have emergency kits, find out how to do that. Power outages, I think we had a couple this year, and try to figure out how to navigate some of those. Again, getting trained up and also looking at how earthquakes and floodings can affect our area. And I just want to encourage, you know, working and seeing fire and how they work so well and respond well to our city. I just want to encourage everybody that we're in really good hands, but we need to be prepared. Just because if we have a major problem here, we can end up experiencing a point in time where first responders might not be able to get to us as quickly as we want because they are handling lots of issues. So just be prepared. Be prepared to help your neighbor, too. Have extra food on hand, extra blankets, things like that. Just be prepared, and these, this website can really give you some great insight to that. So if you haven't been there, if you don't have the app, I suggest you get it for sure because you never know when you're going to need it, and it's always best to be prepared. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If you can pull up my first slide here. I've been working with our school district as well as Bike Temecula Valley and Caught With Your Helmet on a nonprofit here in Temecula. And coming soon to Temecula Valley Unified School District will be e-bike registrations. So if any of your kids or if you're a student and you ride your e-bike to school, you will get one of these, or you'll be forced to get one of these, e-bike stickers that you're going to have to pop on the front of your e-bike. Hopefully, this helps with accountability. We really have seen a lot of e-bike activity in the city that we do not condone, and we want to encourage those who have e-bikes to not participate in any felonious activity out there. So these registration stickers will be coming soon to Temecula Valley Unified School District, so stay tuned for more information on that. Next slide, please. Coming on Wednesday, March 19th, it will be the ribbon coating, and the opening will be March 24th of our second splash pad here in Temecula. This one will be at our CRC, right next to the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. So stay tuned for that. I know my kids are excited for that. And that is all for council reports. We will move on to our consent calendar. Number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of February 25th, 2025. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report for the period of January 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2025. Number five, approve the amended and restated management compensation plan at the request of CalPERS. Number six, receive and file the general plan and housing element annual progress report for the period of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. Number seven, award construction contract to Leslie Gunner Campbell Construction for Park Restrooms, Renovations, Expansions, and Americans with Disabilities Act improvements Project, PW17-006, rebid. If no items want to be pulled, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
That has been seconded and moved. Please vote.
Councilmember Schwink, are you voting?
Aye.
It says yes on my screen.
Okay.
I'll hit it harder.
The consent calendar passes unanimously, 5 to 0. I will now recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of the Temecula Community Services District with President Schwank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and call Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent calendar where we have one item. We have item number eight, approve action minutes of February 25th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let us vote.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Mayor Protem. All right, that passes 5-0. Thank you. Director of Community Service, anything this evening?
Just a couple of notes. No slide, though. I just wanted to remind everybody that our "I am a man" amazing photo exhibit of the civil rights movement actually comes down Monday. So right now, it's up at the museum, which is by Sam Hacks Park, just down the road that way. It's free, open to the public. I highly recommend you check it out, and you only have through Sunday, so time to go. And then I just wanted to reiterate the library sale that's coming up, if, if you didn't catch it during the public statement there, the public comment there. Those books are all donated, and the people who run that sale are all volunteers, and all the proceeds go right back into your local library. It's a great way to just stock up on books if you're an avid reader, have an avid reader in the family, want to, you know, encourage someone to become an avid reader. 50 cents a book for everything there. You, you can't beat it. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. General Manager, anything?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Board of Directors, anything? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn to our next meeting of March 25, 2025.
All right, successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, no meeting. Temecula Housing Authority, no meeting. Temecula Public Financing Authority, no meeting. I will now reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we will move on to our public hearing. Item number nine, introduce ordinance amending Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code, modifying Class IV. Was that Class 4 or 9? One of those four. Entertainment establishment hours of entertainment at the request of Councilmember Stewart. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Planning application LR25-0083 is an amendment to Title IX of the Temecula Municipal Code designed to extend the hours of entertainment that can be offered for a Class 4 license. Before I get into the amendment that we're proposing, just a little background. In July of last year, the council adopted ordinance number 2024-03. This ordinance provided provisions for what was then the new ABC Type 90 alcohol license. Now, I've just put a couple of the particulars associated with this license on the slide. It was specifically designed for music venues only. Sale of full alcohol could be done two hours before a musical event and an hour afterwards. No food service was required, and minors were allowed on-site. Now, when this new alcohol license came in, staff was trying to figure out, okay, how do we manage this, how do we regulate it? And it was determined at the time to create the new Class 4 entertainment license and kind of bundle it, bundle it in with that. So why are we here talking about this tonight? Last month, staff was directed to propose amendments to the entertainment hours for the Class 4 license and then bring it to an upcoming council meeting. What we're proposing tonight for the amendment would allow an additional half hour of entertainment for the Class 4 license. There are no changes to the last call or closing time that's already on the books. Just kind of created this small table here to kind of organize what's changing and what is staying the same. You can see here for the entertainment hours, right now, they have to stop at what is essentially 11 o'clock. And if you go to the next call and they're pose regulations, that's where you see the extra half hour, which will allow them to stop at 11:30 PM. As you can also see, there's no change to the last call, and there's no change to the closing time that's already on the books. If approved tonight, this is what the language would look like in the actual municipal code. Language that's going to be deleted is struck out, and what's being added is underlined. We've also included the table here for you to take a look at that's in the code, and you can see that it's only the Class 4 that is being affected tonight. So just to recap the amendment, we would like to allow one extra half hour of additional entertainment for the Class 4 license. Last call and closing times remain the same, and musical entertainment will continue to be governed by the Class 4 license. And it's worth noting that the Class 4 license does require an annual renewal. From a secret perspective, this project is exempt per Section 15061B3 of the California Environmental Quality Act because it can be seen with certainty that adding an extra half hour of entertainment won't have a significant impact on the environment. Based on the information just presented, staff recommends approval of the amendment. This concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues? No questions. With that, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? With that, I will close the public hearing. Does anyone want to have discussion, or if not, I will take a motion?
I'll motion. We move this?
I will second that motion. Oh, we have one comment.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the motion in a second, and I just wanted to make a quick comment. So we currently have one of these licenses.
Yes.
And we're under no obligation to add any more.
No.
To the city. Just, I just wanted to be clear. It wasn't like there's going, these venues are going to be all over.
No.
This is one establishment, one license currently.
Correct.
And then I think initially, the conversation was, oh, we'd start with two, and we kind of reel that back and said, let's start with one.
That is right.
Let's see how it goes. Okay, I'm good.
All right, that's been motion in second. Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0 unanimously. We will now move on to our business portion of the public hearing. Item number 10, receive presentation related to Old Town Events and Road Closures and provide general direction regarding the same. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, indeed. I'd like to bring up Community Services Manager Mike Wooton and Community Services Supervisor Tracy Tominez. Together, they're going to give you an overview of the events that we hold here in Old Town which have road closures, and then they'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Erica, and good evening, Mayor Calphis and fellow council members. So we were tasked with reviewing all of our Old Town events to determine whether we can modify anything, really to limit the number of road closures on Mercedes Street. And so over the past month, we brought this presentation both to the TCSD Commission and to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, or OTLAC. And we also worked through OTLAC via community development to reach out to local businesses and encourage them to come and speak about any impacts the events and/or road closures have. So for tonight's presentation, Tracy's going to provide some details on, on the Old Town events, including average attendance, budget, and corresponding road closures, and any staff recommendations on moving or modifying specific events. Then at the end, we'll provide the feedback we heard from our previous presentations. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Tracy.
Thank you. Just to begin, this is an overview of the events that currently take place in Old Town and require a road closure primarily in front of City Hall on Mercedes Street. So based on the number of days per event, it brings us to a total of 77 days of road closures. We have two asterisks. The first one would be for the Rod Run. As this event includes road closures on Old Town Front Street and the side streets, however, Mercedes Street remains open throughout the weekend of the event. And then Ride the Vines, it's a cosponsored event that was just approved this afternoon by Economic Development Subcommittee. And then with that, my next slide, I just kind of want to show when we discuss having an event in front of City Hall and we say we're closing Mercedes Street, this is an overview of what that road closure looks like. So we primarily, for events in front of City Hall, use the Civic Center Quad, the Town Square Park, and the surrounding Main Street Y. So with that, we have barricades set up between both entrances of the parking lot. So on the north side, it would be the, we would be leaving access to the parking lot available, and then on the south side, you would be able to utilize the Third Street Alley to either get to Old Town Front Street or to get to those nicely new paved parking lots. So with that, those lots remain open to the public should they need to park there. We also use it for any vendor parking during our events. However, due to the setup of the lots and the road closure, you can't go from one lot to the other. So I just wanted to kind of provide that overview. That way, when we're going through the events and discussing the events that require road closure on Mercedes, this is an overview of what that would look like. So to start with our spring event, the next event we would have planned would be our Community Services Expo on Saturday, April 26th. So with this event, it's a preview of our summer/fall activity guide. So this is where we earn a lot of revenue through our summer day camp programs and all of our other summer and fall classes. So with this event, we do set up on Friday prior to the event. So it's typically a two-day road closure because we provide canopies for all of our contract class instructors who are there to promote their programming as well as our divisions within Community Services. So we typically close the road on Friday in the morning to set up the canopies, and then the event itself is on Saturday. So with this event, we could temporarily reopen Mercedes Street that Friday evening once the canopies are set up. That way, you know, if the canopies are set up by, say, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we could reopen Mercedes Street but keep the Main Street Y closed. That way, the canopies are there, but people would still have access throughout the evening. Then in the morning, when staff arrive for the event, we would close Mercedes Street for the duration and then reopen at the conclusion. Then our next one would be Rod Run, which, as I mentioned, for this one, we utilize Old Town Front Street for the Friday night cruise, which I know Stu is looking forward to. So we utilize Old Town Front Street for the cruise night, and we do close off the side streets for safety. And then on Saturday, we have all of the side streets and Old Town Front Street closed. However, Mercedes Street does remain open throughout the weekend. That way, any of our spectators or those who are just coming to Old Town for the weekend still have access to the parking garage. Culture Fest is a one-day event. With this event, all of our vendors, we bring in vendors selling items to showcase their culture, whether it's a food vendor or a craft vendor. And with this event, all vendors provide their own canopies, so this is strictly a one-day closure. The event itself is from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, so we usually have a little bit of wiggle room depending on how much breakdown the vendors require. But as soon as they're cleared from the event, we reopen the road. So if everyone's cleared by 4:30, then we reopen the roads immediately after. Then heading into the summer, we have our summer concert series. So this event was formerly held at the Community Recreation Center Amphitheater. Over the years of hosting this event and having our partners with the Riverside Sheriff's Department attending the event, we came to the conclusion with that we have outgrown that space due to the number of people who attend that event. It got to the point where sometimes we would be turning people away at the amphitheater door, and they would be hanging out in the parking lot in order to hear the music. So we had our first concert in the summer of 2023. We had moved it over, and then last summer, we moved all of them. And it's with that, it's been a great addition with the Sunset Market. So this year, proposing with our five concerts that we have planned, they would all fall on Sunset Market night, so it would be a combined road closure. With that, due to the setup of the sound equipment and also the setup of the Sunset Market, that closure is from approximately 12 to 10 PM with the concert itself from 7 to 8:30. Then we have our Juneteenth celebration. Then we have our Juneteenth Celebration. This event has been relocated a few times. When it was initially created, it was held in front of the Civic Center Quad, and it was a combination of performances and vendors. Last year, we had hosted it as just a standalone concert at the CRC Amphitheater. This year, we have proposed to host it on a Thursday on the actual holiday in front of the Civic Center Quad. And our goal is with it being in between the summer concerts and the Sunset Market that we would have that built in foot traffic. But this is an event we could look into relocating in the future, whether it be at the CRC Amphitheater or another park. Continuing with the summer, we have our Annual Fourth of July Parade. So with this event, the parade itself kicks off at 10:00 AM. Due to our areas that we utilize for staging, we do close off Old Town Front Street at a certain point. We have kind of staggered road closures for this one. Essentially, Old Town Front Street has closures from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM, just like I said, due to the staging areas. We close it up until about Third Street, and then once it's time to get the parade going, we completely close it. And then with that, also due to how we do our de-staging, just prior to the parade, about 9:30 is when we close off Mercedes Street. That way, if anyone is coming in, they don't kind of get stuck in Old Town, because they, once the parade gets going and we have our de-staging, it kind of gets tricky down at the south end of town or the north end of town. So with that, we essentially have closures from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then National Night Out, this is one we've hosted with Riverside Sheriff's Department the past two years in front of City Hall. It's an opportunity for them to showcase all the divisions that they have within their department. This is an event that we propose relocating for this year. We've reached out to our friends over at the Promenade Mall, and it's something they would be excited to host if we wanted to relocate it. And that way, it has more opportunity, a lot more foot traffic for anyone who wants to come and meet their law enforcement personnel. And getting into the fall, our first one that we would have planned would be the National Preparedness Fair. So this one, we also, again, work very closely with Riverside Sheriff's Department, Cal Fire, and Emergency Management. This is typically a one-day road closure with all of our participants bringing their own canopies. This is an event we are planning to combine with the Annual Health Fair, which will be mentioned in my next slide, and I can go into a little bit more detail. Also, in the fall, is our Cartoona Pluza Art Festival. This event, back in the day, used to be a three-day event, went down to two days. Now it's down to one day on Saturday. However, with this, we do provide canopies for all of our artists who are participating. Due to the setup, once again, similar to the Expo, we could have the Mercedes Street closed, set up all the canopies along the Main Street Y. Once those canopies are set, reopen Mercedes Street that Friday evening and then close it promptly Saturday morning. That event ranges from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And due to the number of canopies we have, it does take a little bit longer to break all those down. So we average between a 9:00 and 10:00 PM reopening of Mercedes Street. Then, as I mentioned, we have the Annual Health and Community Resource Fair. So with this one, with the health fair, again, we provide canopies to the participants who are promoting their health services. So this one, again, we would be able to have the road closure once all the canopies are set up, reopen that Friday evening. So that way, Mercedes Street is available to the public to access and then close it in the morning. So with that, we would be, with combining that one with the Preparedness Fair, we have seen some overlap over the years. The Temecula Valley Hospital, they have participated in both. So with this, combining the two would just be a great way to combine our resources. And that way, everyone is involved. So that would bring us down to just a one-and-a-half-day road closure. Then, as I had mentioned, Ride the Vines, this is hosted by Bike Temecula Valley. So they have applied to host, this would be their second year as a cosponsored event. So it was approved by the Economic Development Subcommittee today. So with that, their plan would be to host it on a Sunday, and they would start and end their ride here in Old Town, and they would utilize the Civic Center Quad and the Main Street Y as kind of a nonprofit expo or vendor fair. So that road closure, we would anticipate being from about 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, to include setup and breakdown. Continuing with the fall, we have our Halloween Carnival. So this event, prior to me even being involved in the event, it used to be hosted at the hockey rink. It moved into the skate park parking lot, eventually moving into the CRC parking lot. And post-pandemic, we found our new home for Halloween Carnival here at the Civic Center Quad. So this one, the carnival itself is from 5:30 to 8:30. Because we set up games and have a booth for each game, we close the road early in the morning. And then we, once everything is picked up, reopen at 10:00. So our first year, when we did bring it to Old Town, we worked together with OTTA to kind of do a merchant trick-or-treat. And so that kind of worked out well, since it was bringing something completely new. We wanted to get them involved, and who doesn't love passing out candy? And then our next fall event would be our Patriotic Salute to Veterans. So historically, this has been a symphony concert held on the front steps of City Hall, and it includes a military banner presentation. The concert is typically about 7:00 to 9:00 PM, or it's 6:00 or 7:00 PM start time. So due to setting up the sound equipment for the symphony, we typically close the roads at 10:00 AM. This is an event we could relocate. In past years, we used to host the Memorial Day Symphony Concert in front of City Hall. And just last year, we had relocated it to the Old Town Temecula Community Theater. So if we were looking to host a symphony concert, that one could be relocated to the Old Town Community Theater, or it could be revisioned to have other performances. So that's definitely one staff could relocate. Puesca Mountain Day is an event that the City Manager's Office hosts each year with Pachanga. So this year, the event would be taking place on a Saturday. So with this event, it's typically about an hour or two in the evening. So we would propose a road closure of about 1:00 to 9:00 PM. Finishing up with our winter events, we have Santa's Light Parade. So this event kicks off at 7:00 PM sharp at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue in Del Rio, and then it travels south through Old Town, ending just south of Old Town Front Street in Santiago. So with that, again, we have kind of sporadic road closures. But essentially, we close Old Town Front Street from about 6:00 to 11:00 PM. And then due to the parade starting, Mercedes Street and ultimately all access to Old Town is closed off at 7:00 PM. Then with our New Year's Eve Grape Drop, we host on the holiday. This event typically has been held in conjunction with the ice skating rink, so it doesn't require a separate road closure. But it would essentially be only a one-day road closure. That way, we have time to set up our vendor booths, any kids' activities, and set up the Civic Center Quad for our live performances. Which brings me to our last event for the holiday season is Temecula on Ice. So this one is typically about a five-week road closure. The ice rink itself usually operates for about three, three-and-a-half weeks. So with that, to construct an entire ice rink and to break it down, that requires road closures in itself about a week and a half for each. And then lastly, we have our year-round event, which is the Temecula Sunset Market. So this is an event that we have an agreement with an event organizer to host the market. It's a second and fourth Thursday of the month, and it runs from March through November. Don't go out there this week, we're canceling it due to the rain. But the next one would be starting on March 27. And with this, the event itself is from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. So for the setup for all of the vendors, it includes road closures from 12:00 to 10:00 PM. And then based on all the events I have shared, some recommendations to combine events or relocate, you can kind of see what that number would be. So as it stands today, we have 78 days of road closures planned. If we were to consolidate events, relocate, or temporarily open up Mercedes Street in the evening, that would bring us to 68 and a half days of road closures. And then if you were to look at what those staff recommendations, and then removing the ice skating rink, that would bring us to 29 and a half days of road closures. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Okay, so as I previously mentioned, we brought this to the TCSD Commission and OTLAC for some recommendations from them. And this following slides, some of the recommendations that they provided. So both slides, they were generally supportive of our recommendations to either combine or relocate some events. But some of the specifics that we got into was, one, using less traveled parks or facilities to drive traffic there, reducing the Sunset Market to once a month, either eliminating or relocating the Fourth of July Parade, which may allow us to enhance the fireworks show as well. Then the Patriotic Salute to Veterans, relocating that to the Old Town Theater. And then either eliminating, relocating, or shortening the ice rink. And then from OTLAC, what we heard, again, generally supportive of our recommendations, but some of the specifics, it was divided. But, you know, what we heard was, you know, the events help define Temecula, but parking and street closures are obviously an issue. We heard that if the Main Street lots were accessible during, you know, the ice rink or other events, they would be more bearable, specifically mentioned the ice rink there. And then, again, recommending reconfiguring or relocating the ice rink. And then what we heard about the Salute to Veterans, that if we did relocate it, one of the recommendations was to keep a symphony concert wherever we did that. So obviously, that kind of limits where we can put it. But so those were the feedback that we heard from our commissions. And that really concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback that you might have.
Thank you very much for all that work and for the presentation. I have a few questions, but if my colleagues have some, we can kick it off with. Any of my colleagues have any questions? I'll ask a few of mine here. You said that at the beginning that you reached out to businesses. Was that just more to get them to come and speak at the OTLAC community or the community meeting? Or was there any, like, direct communication with the businesses besides through the advisors on those commissions?
We invited them to come to the meetings to speak out. That was kind of the direction that we were given, to go that route, work with OTLAC's relationship with the businesses. So that was the extent, is to invite them to come and speak.
Perfect. And I attended the OTLAC meeting, and I could have missed it. But did we hear any input from the OTTA? Did they reach out to any businesses? Did they talk to any businesses? Was there any direct feedback? You know, again, I may have heard it, but when I heard them smoke, there was no really deliberation or recommendations from the actual Old Town Association, which is, you know, the head of the Old Town businesses here.
Yeah, so Julie Ngo, who acts as President of OTTA and also the Chair of OTLAC, she had said, one of the first things she had said is that, you know, they would hate to see anything changed with the events in Old Town. So we had shared the agenda with all of the members of OTLAC, and then from there, in their respective role, they could communicate with them. So I believe that Julie had expressed that to members of OTTA to make sure that they were aware of the meeting and if they would like to attend and make any public comments.
Okay, but there was no consensus where she said she actually spoke directly to businesses in Old Town or anything like that?
No, from her committee member report, she kind of gave more of her personal opinions.
Yep, that's exactly what it sounded like to me.
If I can just clarify one thing. So I'm assuming the question is about, did we reach out to businesses regarding this specific presentation? There's another element, which is that we do reach out to all of the Old Town businesses in preparation for every individual event. So just to make sure, I'm not sure which side of the question you were asking there, but...
No, just essentially to get, you know, the goal of these advisory committees is to have them advise us. And we put, like, specific individuals on, for instance, the OTLAC community, right? We have a resident on the OTLAC committee, because we want to hear what residents in Old Town, what they feel and what they're saying. We put the head of the businesses on the OTLAC to hear what the OTTA is saying, to hear what the businesses are saying. And I just didn't feel that, you know, those voices were really advised for us, if that makes sense. It was hard for me to decipher if it was opinion or, hey, you know, as the head of the Old Town businesses, did you reach out to these businesses? Or was there no, you know, communication there? So I guess it's more of an advisory for me, for the commission members, to make sure, you know, you're appointed to a commission for a very specific reason. We expect you to be knowledgeable and to reach out to the constituents that you are appointed to serve. And, you know, we're taking advice from the OTLAC, we're taking advice from the Community Services District. And if individuals on those committees don't go out and reach out to the constituents, it's hard for them to give us a good advisory, if that makes sense. And on that note, did we reach out to, I know we've had a lot of deliberation with our sheriffs. Did we reach out to fire? I've personally spoke to a few, and maybe Chief Crater can touch on this. But when Mercedes Street is closed, you know, obviously, the fire engine, which is Fire Engine 12 on Mercedes Street, can't go down Mercedes Street. So if there's a call south of Old Town, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Crater, but if there's a delay, we have to call a farther-away engine to get to that medical aid. And having Mercedes Street closed is closing infrastructure and closing infrastructure for our public safety to get to a possible call on the south side of Old Town. And again, we can have Chief Crater hit on that, if he has any points. But if I'm off by anything.
You're correct. No, it does delay the response. If we have to hit Old Town Front Street, it's plugged up, especially depending on the weekend. They got to go to Pujul, or they have to take the freeway around, or we start Engine 84 if they're in quarters to come over Santiago. So there is a delay. We've always worked around it. But yeah, you're right. It does cause a delay.
And to answer your question, yes, we do work with, really, we collaborate with all departments, whether it's Public Works, Community Development, Fire, RSO. All of our events are coordinated with that collaborative nature of all the groups, yes.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And that's my biggest thing, because I know a lot of us up here, you know, public safety is number one. And for me, being a firefighter, I always think about how the quickest way to get to the call. And, you know, we contract with AMR. For those that don't know, we contract with AMR, and they're not always in the loop on city events that are going on. So if there's a call on the south side of Old Town, and the AMR, the ambulance, is coming from the north side of Old Town, they may come thinking that, oh, Mercedes is open, Mercedes is closed, now Old Town Front Street is backed up all the way to Rancho California Road. So there, and it just causes a whole delay. And, you know, public safety, like I said, for a lot of my colleagues, is number one. And closing infrastructure, when there's only two streets, north and south, inside of Old Town, causes that delay, like Chief Crater said. Lastly, you know, for events, and I was looking at the consolidation, one event on there, and I'll just give a few examples, the health fair. You know, and I know the hospital just started doing their own health fair. Are there events like that where we can partner with, you know, private entities in Temecula to maybe move those events that are right now in front of City Hall to a more suitable location? Like a hospital, a health fair, and a hospital kind of go hand-in-hand. A pet expo and Mike Nigar Dog Park kind of go hand-in-hand. So there's events that we do that I personally feel, and I'd love to hear from my colleagues once we get into a whole deliberation. But those events that may have a better, you know, place and find a more suitable home than in front of City Hall, have we thought about consolidating those events as well? I know there's a bunch of consolidation, but those specifically were, they may be better suited elsewhere.
Yes, we're always open to council feedback. So if we are given that direction to consider relocating an event, we're definitely open to it. I know that's something that staff kind of did discuss, as you mentioned, with the pet expo, something like that, it might be better suited at a dog park or a park to have that foot traffic. That way, those who are interested in adopting a dog, maybe they're already on their way to the dog park. So there's definitely events like that. We could relocate and, you know, look into other of our partners that we could work with, whether it's on their property. Sometimes it gets tricky looking into relocating all events due to the space that we need to set it up. We wouldn't want to, you know, host an event at a sports park and then be dislocated or, you know, having to relocate a sports tournament that's going on. So it's those kind of things we would need to look at, you know, event by event, to see what locations would be suitable. But again, if that's the direction we receive, whether it's from council or through our Parks and Rec Subcommittee, it's something that staff would look into.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And last question, sorry for all the questions. But on an event that says the average attendance is 500 people, and there's 18-plus of those events, would you say that sometimes there's upward of 1,000 people attending, and then sometimes there's less of 200 attending? Would that be a fair statement to make?
I believe you're referring to Sunset Market, is that correct?
That or the Temecula on Ice?
Oh, got it.
Yeah, either one of those.
Yeah, so with all of our events, it varies depending on the attendance, if the weather isn't the best, if we've had to reschedule an event. There's been several times when the Preparedness Fair, for example, it was originally scheduled to take place in September, and it was canceled either due to fires or the weather. And then when we rescheduled it in November, not as many people were aware, so we automatically had less foot traffic. So it's tough to provide an average for every single event, kind of as a whole. But I would say it depends on if there's conflicting events. You know, if we're hosting an event the same weekend as Blue and Wine Festival, we automatically will have less attendance. So kind of just depends on the weather and what's going on with other events in the community. But definitely, there is years where one event, we have an uptick of attendance, and other times, it's a little slower. So there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for all that information and answering my questions. Any of my colleagues have any other questions? With that, I would love to hear from the public. So we will see if there's any public comments on this agenda item. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have five public comments on this item. It is a business item. Each speaker has up to five minutes. The first speaker is Patrick Schneider, to be followed by Ricky Lee.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, staff. Thank you for taking up this really important topic of discussion. So as we mentioned, my name is Patrick Schneider. We have two businesses in Old Town. The Temecula Lavender Company on Front Street and Corbeau Wine and Tea House on Mercedes. So we have a 360-degree view of everything that's going on in Old Town. And so one of the things that we can think about when we close down Mercedes is, there are two things. One is the parking. So the Main Street parking lots are typically shut down. Now I see that, you know, they may be open, which is fantastic. But then the other aspect of this is the immense pressure that's put on Front Street. And, you know, that's just a real challenge. And so when people, we're attracting people to these events, we want them to have a great experience and we want them to get there and be able to park. And that's part of having a great experience. And so that's something to think about. And there's this stigma about Old Town, that locals, that we hear from with the locals, that it's congested and I will never go down there. And so these events are really helping bring people down, but we want them to have a really great experience. Now, we talked about public safety of why we shut down Mercedes, but just recognize that we're able to manage public safety with Mercedes open with the rod run. So rod run is 60,000 people. That's more than every other event combined, if you exclude Santa's Parade, because Santa's Parade is basically shut down the entire Old Town. So think about, how do we manage that? How do we manage 60,000 people and keep Mercedes open? And this is a view of the booths that are around the fountain. The other thing that I would sort of mention is that, and we talked a little bit about this, that it's maybe a public safety risk to shut down Mercedes. We already talked about, you know, the access for emergency vehicles. There's no way that they're going to go down Front Street. But I will tell you a story of when I was working a booth at the ice rink. And there was this gentleman, young gentleman, that came down the steps, and you'll see that in figure one, yelling, hey, wait for me, wait for me, you know, with his friends at the ice rink. And he ran into the chains that are between the stanchions and broke the chains, I mean, actually broke the chain link. And so if we're shutting down Mercedes, please, let's make sure that there are no obstacles. Let's make sure that either the chains are removed or there's some barriers so that people are, you know, safe with that. So the question I think we have in our, with our discussion is, how do we find a way to have events, you know, maybe we limit some of them, and keep parking open and keep Mercedes open? I can, I definitely understand that when there's an event that involves both the park and the civic center, that that's obviously not, you know, reasonable to keep Mercedes open during that situation. But those events that are just in the park, we can manage that. We can manage keeping Mercedes open with those. And then the other thing to think about, it's not always about events. Mercedes gets shut down a lot for non-event activities, photo shoots, video shoots, trainings, and then of course, construction, which is, you know, obviously important. So those are my comments today. Thank you very much for picking up this topic. I think it's really important, not only for, you know, enjoying our community, which we love, this is why we have businesses down here, but that we, you know, really have people have a really good and safe time here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ricky Lee, to be followed by Ross Jackson.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. I'm Ricky from 1909. I won't go too much into the, what, how I feel about the closures themselves. You'll get plenty of opinion about that. I think it's probably a pretty, oh, pretty big consensus that it does create long-term damage to Old Town in general, not just businesses, just visitation of Old Town. And it definitely tells the locals, do not come here, especially with the number that we have. I think one thing to take into consideration is that the day of the closures and what day of the week are they, what time of the year are they, are they on a holiday or not? That matters. That's a huge factor that I don't think really is considered. I also think the way that the committee is kind of looking at it is that events and road closures are the same topic. And I disagree. I mean, obviously they do, are in the same discussion, but it's, I have to agree so much with him that the goal, I think, is to find, how do we do these events without the road closures? And the feedback that I've gotten recently is, the reaction is like, how dare that we even say that? That we must be anti-safety? And that's just not the case. I know, I know they are running very safe, responsible businesses. I don't think a lot of people would consider 1909 a safe and, or unsafe and irresponsible ran business. We're definitely, I mean, safety matters. It absolutely matters. But the recommendations that I've seen recently and on this topic is, we just throw the baby out with the bathwater. If we can't shut the roads down, we just throw the events away. We don't do the events. They're eliminated, they're relocated. And I really encourage you, before you make a decision, to really look at, how can we look in the middle somewhere and find out what events can we do with the road open and find it to be reasonably safe? I do think most of the events, that is possible. And for the record, we are huge fans of the events. I couldn't be a bigger supporter of the events. I go to the events. The last Friday rod, you know, cruise, I had six screaming girls in my 55 fare lane, which I know you're probably doing the math, there aren't six seat belts in there, but it's a slow cruise, I think it's all right. But they had a blast. I'm a fan of them. During the, and I know you'll hear a little bit about, do they cause a decrease in sales? And they do for us on that particular day. But I do think it's well worth the long-term benefit of maybe it's, today isn't the best day we've ever had, but is it telling 60,000 people to come back? And it does. I'm a firm believer that it does. And a little bit of an issue that I had have is, I reached out two and a half years ago about this exact problem. I reached out again four months ago about it. And really, I feel like it's just lip service. It's, we're acting like we're listening and then it's not addressed. And I'm a little bothered to hear that you are being told that the restaurants and business owners are being reached out to. It's just, it's just not true. I, we are, we've been open for 10 and a half years. We have 110 employees. I mean, I think 1909 is a fixture of Old Town. I think most would agree. In other than one time during COVID in 10 and a half years, we've never been reached out to by a single council member, committee member, planning department, events, visit Temecula, Chamber of Commerce. Meanwhile, a lot of them are, those departments are voting against Old Town's best interest, but no, never, not, there has not been an occasion. And I mean, that bothers me. I think it's, I think it's interesting. I don't think that the city wants to hear the, our perspective and our, now, does that mean that 1909's perspective is the perspective? No, not at all. But do I think maybe sometimes it might be of some value? I would think that it would be. No, I'm out of time. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ross Jackson, to be followed by Liseth Bader, I think.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Ross Jackson, Vice Chairman of OTTA. So I'm here to present on behalf of the OTT Association, representing the interests of the business in the area. We believe the number of road closures on Mercedes have become excessive. These closures are significantly impacting businesses and we would like to be part, OTT would like to be part of the conversation to explore ways to reduce their frequency while identifying those events. Old Town businesses are supportive on maintaining. These issues have only recently come to our attention a week ago, and we are in the process of outreach to all of our tenant association members. So in the future, in the next coming weeks or so, you will be hearing from Julie and myself and the OTT Board, our responses to your requests for information from the local merchants. While right now, part of it is, the fact is that we didn't really know for sure how many days the closure was until we just received a report saying there was, we knew there was somewhere between 70 and 80 days. We didn't really know the full impact. But now we do. We have the information at our hands and we would be more than happy to get this information out to the local merchants. It's not a matter of when, it's a matter of how we get it out. We want to make sure that we have all the proper information that we submit to our association members. And that's why we're requesting to be part of this group, so be it a subcommittee or a advisory board, to the council. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate on the balanced solution that benefits the community and the local businesses as well. Right now, that's all I have and I appreciate your time in listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one question from our council member, if that's okay? Mayor Protem, have a question?
Okay, perfect. Just a quick question. With the OTT, so are they all for, just to my understanding, they're all for the closures or just a combination of closures and also events?
Basically, on the current spreadsheet that I have in front of me, we are very supportive on the 29 days of closures. And during, I was just there, we had a meeting at 5:00. I had to leave at 5:50 to get over here to put my notice in so I could speak. And the notes that I was given to me by our board members is that, the bottom line is that we feel is very important that we collaborate as a team. OTT represents 100 or so association members. And we're trying to get the input from them. Yes, I mean, we've heard the same thing, 1909 has told you, a lot of people don't like it, they lose business, but it's only one day. But when you take 38 days for the ice rink, that impacts a lot of money to a lot of the local businesses. So we are in favor of the reduction to 29 days. And that would be very easy for us to get across to our members as well. I think they would see it and greatly appreciate it.
I think we have a couple more questions for you, too. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ron?
So how inclusive is OTT as far as representing?
I'm sorry?
How inclusive is OTT as far as representing Old Town businesses?
Oh.
I mean, I know you said you have about 100 members, but how many active members?
100 paid. I mean, this is an association where they pay into the association to be a merchant.
I wouldn't say paid. Let me rephrase that. When I say active...
Well, their membership dues, let's put it this way, membership dues, we have approximately 100 members.
Okay, but when I say active members, it's, you know, how many people are representing the opinion that 29 road closures is appropriate?
We have five, six on our board. And we've been out there talking to people. We've, me personally, I've been out there and talked to a lot of the restaurant owners, a lot of the merchants as well. Pretty active in town, as everybody knows. So it's a general consensus that they would like to see less closures.
Okay.
As everybody else would.
Thanks. Thank you very, and I just want to say that, you know, I apologize if the OTT didn't have enough time. This was an issue that was brought forward to my staff and our staff up here in early January. And the hope was, you know, we delayed it all the way until March 11th today, but the hope was getting it to you. And maybe it was a miscommunication between our city staff and the OTT, and we can figure that out later, but it's been on the docket, you know, as March 11th as the vote.
Right.
And the hope was, was that the two and a half months notice for the OTLAC committee, which was, I believe, a week or two ago, that was the whole, the purpose of OTT having that voice. And it'll be great to have it post this vote, but the, we needed it tonight, if that makes sense.
To give you a little brief history on us, we meet once a month. So had there been a meeting in between the two months, we don't call a special meeting to say, we need to talk about the road closure issue so we can be prepped for March 11th. What happened, because this was on our meeting notes today and I go, oh my God, you know, I guess somebody better go talk. And I got selected to go talk.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Just one last question. You said that the OTT is in favor of the 29 days of road closures. Would it be fair to say that if there were less road closures, there would be a consensus in the OTT that they would be okay with less than 29?
Of course. I mean, if there's less closures, more opportunities for businesses to keep operating. But we're, I mean, if it's no less than 29, we're okay with 29 as well.
You'll take it.
And I can speak on the behalf of the board as well.
Thank you very much. We will try to give you as much days as road opening as possible.
Yes, and again, if we do decide to have a committee, I would strongly request that you call us and have OTT be a representative on that committee as well. So we can not only take your information to us and then assimilate it into the community.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Liseth Bader, and I apologize if I, the last name, to be followed by Chris Cusack.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Liseth Padilla and I am the Director of Operations at Luke's On Front. Events are supposed to support local businesses, yet the reality is that many of these road closures do the exact opposite. Instead of helping us, they block access to our doors, prevent our customers from reaching us, and allow outside vendors who don't contribute to this community year-round profit from our expense, at our expense. Every time streets close for an event, we lose business. Guests can't find parking, employees struggle to get to work on time, deliveries are delayed, takeout orders drop because there's no easy way for customers to pick up food. Meanwhile, the events bring in outside vendors like food trucks and pop-ups, competing directly with the bars and restaurants that pay rent, taxes, and wages all year long. These vendors don't contribute to the community like we do. They just show up for a day, take the profits, and leave. We lose revenue. Walk-in traffic declines because guests assume we're inaccessible or don't want to deal with parking headaches. Reservations drop because people don't want the hassle of finding a way to our location. We struggle with staffing. Our employees can't find parking, which lead to tardiness, stress, and even missed shifts. I know that for me personally, it deterred me from applying into jobs in Old Town. We face higher security risks. Law enforcement and emergency services have difficulty reaching us quickly due to these closures. The vendors are not held to the same strict standard for signage that we are. We don't see a return in business from these events. We are forced to compete against temporary vendors who don't have the same health inspections, overhead costs, or responsibilities that we do. This is not what supporting local businesses looks like. Let's be honest, this is not about bringing people into Old Town for businesses like ours. This is about creating events that benefit a select few while leaving the rest of us struggling to make up for the loss. If the city truly wants to support local businesses, it needs to prioritize the businesses that actually make Old Town what it is. I'm asking the City Council to seriously reconsider how these road closures and events are planned and how they impact businesses like ours. Specifically, we need limited or no temporary food vendors at events where existing restaurants and bars can provide what's needed. A real traffic plan including clear detours, very clear signage, business priority parking, and delivery access so that our customers and employees can still reach us. Better enforcement of public safety measures during high-traffic events. If we're being forced to deal with increased crowds, we should have additional security support not to be left to deal with it on our own. I understand that events are important, but they should not come at the direct expense of businesses that make Old Town what it is. The reality is simple. If these closures continue to hurt our business, we won't be able to sustain the same level of service, employment, or community involvement. That hurts not just us, but the entire city. I urge the council to listen to those of us who actually work, invest, and contribute to Old Town every single day, not just those who show up for a weekend event and take money out of our community. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Cusack, to be followed by Brad Trithok.
Looks like Mr. Cusack is not here, so we'll move on to the next public speaker, please.
Brad, please. And then the last speaker will be Nathan Rivera.
Welcome.
Good evening. This is my first go at this, so I'm going to shoot from the hip here. I certainly agree with the sentiments that have been spoken already, so I don't think I really need to rehash that. I'll say this, this is probably my first time here because ultimately, I'm in the hospitality business. I don't really like to get into politics and choose sides with this person, choose sides with that. I don't really like to get into politics and choose sides with this person, choose, choose sides with that. I'm in the business of opening my doors and welcoming all, so. Yeah, it's awkward for me to be here if I'm being honest. So I think ultimately for me, the reason why, even though it is awkward for me, why I would choose to come is because I think it has just gotten to the point where, yeah, I'm questioning, you know, is Mercedes a road or is, or is it not? A few road closures are, you know, that's fine, but it just, it definitely seems like it's gotten out of hand. I can agree with some of the other sentiments, you know, certainly with, as it relates to the rod run, the Christmas parade, I mean, those are events that have been around for a long time. Those hurt our business, but I could care less about it because I think they're great for the community. Those events were in place long before I ever signed a lease down here. But over time, ten years of doing business down here and committed to a lease, and the infrastructure starts to slowly erode away and change. Well, then I guess there's maybe a call to action here. So, yeah, I, I trust that you all hold your, your seats with the highest level of responsibility. And I, I trust that you, that this isn't just a routine gimmick for you all and that you, you take to heart seriously what you do. And I'm thankful for you. I'm grateful that you, you do hold office and that you do take these considerations seriously. And I guess maybe just one last note. Another reason why it's awkward for me to be here. I think sometimes, and potentially rightfully so, that business owners and restaurant owners, you know, have a reputation of just constantly griping and, and constantly just trying to, you know, fight for, you know, more money in their pockets. And whereas that may be true, man, I certainly hope that I don't get misjudged in that category this evening. That I'm truly standing before you as somebody who truly fights for the city, who loves the city, who takes great pride in it. I think Old Town is the lifeblood of Temecula, as it should be. When we opened up on Mercedes Street, everybody told me I was stupid, that I should be on Front Street, that's the only way to make money. And my comment to them was, I'm opening here for the locals. I'm, you know, when we opened in two thousand fifteen, that was a sentiment back then. Locals didn't want to come to Old Town. And so it was our hope that we could maybe put something in the back corner and attract more people to Old Town. And I think maybe we've done that, and I would just love to see that continue. I, I did hear the minutes from the previous meeting, I think that was held, and I was encouraged. I feel like we're probably way more on the same page than not. I love your sentiments. I believe that the sentiment is to attract more people to Old Town. Just strongly asking to consider that infrastructure such as roads and parking are, in my opinion, and with kind of being in the trenches, if you will, and hearing from many, many customers, many, many neighbors, friends, that the gripe of Old Town is that it's just, it's, it's too hard to get into. And being a business owner, you know, we always look for, where's the easy access? Do my customers have access to me? And if we're looking at it as from a business perspective, that as, you know, you're running Old Town as it's a business, are we making it easy for customers to get down here or not? So I get the sentiment. Let's add more events to draw people, which I love. I would just say, are we compromising by way of infrastructure to make it happen? And I would love to, I gotta believe, and I've seen it in so many other cities and around all of America, that you can hold these events and still have a road open. I've, I've seen it. So I gotta believe there's a way to draw that up where everybody's satisfied with safety concerns and everything else.
Thank you, Brad. Your time is up. Really appreciate it.
Like I said, I'm a rookie.
You're good, you're good. The last speaker is Nathan Rivera.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Kelfus.
Good evening to the council and everyone else here on the panel. I am also one of the owners at Goat and Vine with Brad and his wife, Felicia. Very grateful to be here in this community, very grateful to be in front of all of you today. You know, as I listen to everyone's comments, as well as the city and the commission, I really don't think we're that far apart, and I wholeheartedly mean that. I think we share in the same objectives, to enrich the city, to enrich the community, to bring events that bring people out and together. That's what we do in restaurants, that's what we do at the Goat and Vine, at Two Travelers, at Little Goat. And I think you want the same thing that we do. And I think we're just trying to find common ground and how do we, how do we attain that objective, right? And I think we're just here today, all of us, I mean, you heard from a lot of restaurant owners and retailers would share the same, same opinion, that there is a disparate impact on these businesses in Old Town, even when the intentions are good. And I believe that the intentions from this council, from the decision-makers, that your intentions are good. You know, to drive people into Old Town, to drive business to these restaurants, to these retailers, right? But sometimes even the best intentions have that disparate impact, right? And I'll tell you from the analytics that we pull, whenever Mercedes Street is closed, our revenue falls by ten percent. That's less hours for people, that's less tax revenue for this city. But as Brad mentioned, I, I hope you know that this isn't just a financial advocacy to you this evening, right? If it were, we'd be advocating for the, you know, ending the rod run, right? Ending the light parade, ending Fourth of July parade, right? On those days, our businesses lose fifty percent. But of course, as Brad mentioned, and as you heard other speakers mention, those are inherently good events for our city. And we believe that they're add a lot of extra value. And of course, we want to continue promoting that, even if it is a loss for, for us. So I think in, I think in, in turn, you know, I think we, we just want to be able to, to find a solution to this. And to just let our, our opinion and our experiences be, be heard. This is the first time in a decade that we felt it was important enough to appear before you today. And I hope that we can work towards a solution to this. And that, I hope you also know that we're not up here advocating for no events in Old Town and, you know, always keeping Mercedes open. And I really do appreciate the work that the commission has done, that this council has done, into hearing us and saying like, yeah, I think there are solutions, right? I mean, even, even moving the ice rink, right? We have great private businesses here. I mean, Pelzer's, I mean, Galloway Downs, other great venues where you can kind of host these events and bring community members and privatize these things. I mean, there's, there's lots of solutions, right? I mean, we can have more events at Ronald Reagan and we can have more events at the mall. And I mean, this is not an advocacy to, to stop events, right? This is just an advocacy to, to be heard. So I thank everyone tonight for, for their time and for enduring us and really appreciate every single one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll start this off before we get into deliberation with my colleagues. And I want to start off with saying thank you to everyone that came up and spoke. And it's, it's not often that you get businesses to even come and speak, right? You know, like a couple of the public speakers said, they've never been in City Hall once and they've been in, in business in Temecula for over ten years. So to come here and speak in front of us, you know it's an important issue. And, you know, the, the recommended, and we'll get into this, is twenty-nine days, but I will speak for you. And I will say that's, that's too many days still. A month closing fifty percent of the infrastructure, north-south streets in Old Town is too many days. It's too many days. But you're heard. And to, to, to hear some of the businesses say that you feel like you haven't been heard and it's the first time you've been listened to, I want you to know that, that we are listening. We do hear you. And I know my colleagues up here are listening and hearing you too. And hopefully the, the decision tonight reflects that. And this started, you know, someone mentioned, one of the restaurants mentioned they brought it up two and a half years ago. This really started for me, I just came on council two and a half years ago, not even two and a half. By the end of, or the summer of last year, I started to hear some, some murmur in Old Town about road closures and how they're affecting businesses. And I brought this up to the city manager, Aaron Adams, late last year, early this year. And, you know, being who I am, I'm very forward, I'm very blunt in my, my verbiage and how I want to go about things. And I said, hey, my end goal, after speaking with a few businesses, is to open up Mercedes Street. And, you know, and he's always great at listening and taking my ideas and putting them right down the, the way the government does it, right? So we, we go to the proper committees, we meet with the TCSD president, we send this to the OTLAC, we listen to the OTTA, we send this to the Community Services Commission, and we get all of their input, which we did, right? And I listened to the, the Community Services District, I thought they had great dialogue. They mentioned, you know, I think the, the highlight of their whole thing to me was lowering the Sunset Market to maybe one time per month, limiting that road closures there. I think that was a great, great point there by their, our Community Services District. You know, I went to the OTLAC meeting, again, I voiced my opinion, but it sounds like the OTTA didn't get it, wasn't able to, to really grasp the subject and give us the advice that I was seeking. And we'll get to the bottom of that at a different time. But I, I want you, everyone to know that, that you are heard, we are listening. And I will speak on behalf of the businesses here, and even the residents, right? There, there's residents in Old Town. There's not just businesses. There's residents at the Cameron Building, there's residents at, at the Luke's Building, there's residents at the warehouse at Creekside. And I went and spoke to those meetings. So even though I went to the OTLAC, I, even though I listened to the Community Services District meeting, I met with the TCS president, I met with everyone, the most important people I talked to, no offense to all those other commissions and, and council members, is the businesses and, and the people that live here, because that's who we work for. We work for you. And our votes are supposed to be a reflection of the community and the constituency that we serve. And I have a slide here, if they can put it up, of the businesses that I went to and spoke with. And this is an exhaustive list. This is me going face-to-face. You know, I went to another fifteen today, over fifty businesses, five-zero businesses in Old Town, face-to-face. And I either spoke to the owner or the manager of all of these businesses. And I asked them, what is the, and I was actually looking for someone to say, man, we love when Mercedes Street is closed. And I can tell you, I got that from one business. They wanted Mercedes Street closed. If they could have it three hundred sixty-five days, they would have it three hundred sixty-five days. But they were an outlier. All the other businesses, and I would love for the OTTA to see this list and, and give me a different opinion on, on any of these, they all said that they suffer when Mercedes Street is closed. And at the end of the day, Mercedes Street is a road, it is infrastructure to these businesses, to the residences. And all of these businesses said that you, as the city entity, need to stop closing down infrastructure for people to spend money on our businesses. But it's not even about spending money, like the businesses said, it's about bringing communities together. But the community comes to Old Town not for City Hall, not for this building, unless they're getting a business license or a permit. They come here for the, the businesses on this list and the other hundred-plus that aren't on this list. That's what makes Old Town, Old Town. And our job as a government entity is to support you and get out of your way. That is my belief as government. We should support you, make things easier for you, and nothing else. And my thought is, is with infrastructure closing it down, we are hurting the businesses. We are hurting residents getting to and from their place where they live. And we're causing, like I heard, long-term damage to Old Town. We've already seen a few businesses on Old Town Front Street close. We've already seen, you know, other areas where I've talked to multiple businesses on here that said, hey, our lease is up in a year. If we would have known, this was a hard one, if we would have known what Old Town was prior to signing the lease, we would not have signed the lease here. And that one, to me, struck a chord. It was like, I, as you know, I'm born and raised in Temecula. I love Temecula, I love Old Town. And to hear a business say it's difficult to operate, not because of the community, but because of the way that we operate as a government and the things that we are doing that are making it more difficult for businesses to succeed. Because I just believe they should be able to succeed or fail without our input. That was hard for me to swallow. And I think, you know, going through, we're going to go through the events, I think, today. And like I said, you know, my thought is twenty-nine is too many days. A month closure of fifty percent of the north south, north-south streets in Old Town is too many days. We need to be very pertinent on the events that we choose. We need to choose ones that truly benefit the entirety of the community, ones that draw in thousand-plus residences or locals to the city. And we need to really look hard and be intentional. That's what I was looking for. We need to be intentional about the events that we choose. And intention is huge. And, and talking with my colleagues, and we'll see the sentiment, but I think that's what we need to deliberate about, is which events, and this may be a subcommittee thing, but it needs to happen and it needs to happen now. If you've watched any city council meeting, you know that I don't like to do things slow. I like to make things happen. I'm the same way in my day job where I recognize the need, I define a problem, I take in all of the, the possible solutions. I do my hypothesis, I get, I create a solution, and I go with that solution. That's the same way I operate as a council member. The, the, the need right now is to open Mercedes Road, right? That's the problem. We define the problem, we recognize the need, we collect the data, we listen to the businesses. I have over, you know, fifty businesses I've talked to, I've listened to Community Services District, I've listened to the OTLAC, I've heard the OTTA, I've spoken to residences here. So we've done all that, we've collected all the data, we've analyzed the data, we see what we need to do. And what we need to do is open Mercedes Street more often than not. And if you put up the last chart here, and then I'll, we'll let the council deliberate here. This is the chart on twenty-twenty-one, we had approximately forty-two days we were closed, just four years ago. And that has almost doubled to over, the last figure that I got was eighty-two and a half days in twenty-twenty-four. Eighty-two and a half days of Mercedes Street road closure. Not only is eighty-two too many days, fifty's too many days, forty's too many days, thirty's too many days, twenty may even be too many days. We need to get it down. We need to let our locals get to the businesses and get to their homes in Old Town. Whenever we make a decision on anything in the town, say it's a roundabout in Los Ranchitos, we go to the HOA of Los Ranchitos and we hear what they have to say. The first people we should hear what have to say when we make any decision in Old Town is the businesses, is the residents, is you. We take your feedback. So we can have all the advisory commission meetings we want, but what is most important is your voice. And that has been heard up here tonight. And like I said, thank you again for coming out. Thank you again for, for speaking your mind. I know it's never easy to, to do this, especially when it puts a face to the business name. But it's important, and I think this meeting's important, and I'm excited to hear what my, my council colleagues have. Thank you. We can start this off. Mayor Protem?
Alrighty, thank you very much, mayor. A couple of things I just want to say is, I'm glad this is a topic that we're talking about. Like, we're here, we're having the conversation. I want to thank the speakers and the businesses for coming up. And I just want to put it out there as well that I know myself and city council member Zach Schwank actually last year had an opportunity to go with Ross, I think it was David and Chris from Bailey's, to take a tour of Old Town, to kind of get an idea of what they're needing. What is the viewpoint of the OTTA? Because they're, in our perspective, like the, you know, the speakers for, I think, a hundred and fifty-some on businesses down there, which I, I feel is, is a good place to start for us as a council. And I know our city definitely gets out there and talks to businesses because they're dropping things off constantly. If there is somebody who's, the information isn't getting to them, we need you to come to council. Like, I want you guys to make sure you have all the information in order for the city and the residents and the businesses to make sure we're operating as a community as a whole. So if you're not getting anything, please let us know as well. And don't ever feel bad for coming to council. Like, I want to hear from you guys. So thank you again. I just want to put it out there as well, myself and, and Zach Schwank actually had a meeting with Julie Noe and Chris Bailey. Just because of the movement and how quickly everything was moving to this meeting, I wanted to get it going as fast as possible. One of the things that Julie brought to me, because I did ask her about the road closures, and there is a balance, right? Like, I think realistically, we're all talking about a balance. And one of the things I'm hearing from a lot of the owners, or at least from Julie, this is what she told us, is the fact that people are coming in angry, pissed off, trying to find a parking spot. But the city of Temecula's been working on it. And we have a system called the Frog System that we're, we just are putting into phase one right now and then into phase two. And I'm going to get into a little bit more of what that looks like to help get people moving and finding on their phone, on their app, how to get to a parking spot directly, so that way they're not ticked off and they're not late for a reservation and all this other stuff. Because that's what I heard, again, from Julie directly, myself. I think that's what we heard, correct? So that was one part. I also have had opportunity to talk to, I guess, like I said, OTTA. I went to the OTLAC meeting last week. I've spoken to businesses, I've spoken to residents, I've spoken to law enforcement. And the impact differs for everybody. You know, we have to, again, find that, strike that balance between the community need, the heart of Temecula, family, and also businesses. If all of us remember back in twenty-twenty, that at least the four of us were on here, we ended up seeing the shift and complete turnaround during COVID time. This place turned into a not-so-much a family-friendly place, and that's what we were hearing from residents. So our staff has continued to work really hard on ensuring that we can get that family-friendly environment here and the heart of Temecula back here in, in Old Town. Now, again, bringing this up, great conversations, because how do we refine and how do we do it better? So, and I'm seeing all of us have like tons of these little yellow pages full of notes, so I'll try and keep it limited. But again, we want to have those old traditions. Right here back on the seal, it talks about old traditions. And for us being families, and it doesn't matter what your family looks like, it could be big, it could be just a small family, but it's important to have those old traditions and families and communities to gather in a place to do that. And I feel that Old Town is absolutely the place And I feel that Old Town is absolutely the place to do that. We moved here about seven years ago, and because of how Temecula is run, we came back to this area. We lived in this area, and we came back because of what Temecula is, and because of what it provided for me and my five kids and my husband. So that is what we have to remember also, what we're bringing to the city. Um, one of the other things I also wanna bring forward is the fact that I spoke to my, my other council member here, and we are going to try to meet with the OTTA on a quarterly basis. I wanna have an understanding, myself and, uh, Councilmember Schwank, what is going on and what is needed. So that was something we brought, uh, forward to our staff, which they are going to provide a calendar for us to get into those meetings, to get, uh, the assistance and the information that we need from the resi, from the, um, not only the residents, but also really the business owners. Uh, like I had talked about, a little bit about the Frog, so we are a very data-driven sent, uh, city, which I like, I think everybody's kinda data-driven. If, if I could talk Matt, Ron is a definite da- data-driven kinda guy. Um, one of the things I actually encountered today was, I was in the Economic Development, uh, meeting today. And before I got in there, I was trying to figure out, is there a way that we can track how many people are coming into the city during an event? And there is a way, and so it's called Placer. And it's, I'm gonna read it here, Placer can, uh, give real da, uh, real-time data on how many people visit the parks, how long they stay. We can then run visitor data for Rod Run weekends in Old Town, as an example. T C S D reported in the Rod Run recap, over fifty thousand attendance. Uh, Placer data said fifty thousand, fifty thousand and a half visitors and forty-six point six thousand visitors, some attend both days. The Placer data was available almost immediately. So this is something that our city could partake in, and, uh, so it's something I'd like to be able to talk to our, uh, staff to possibly look into, if our city council is, uh, willing to approve of that. I'm gonna try and close up here, last bit, um, I'd also like to be able to look at parking passes, and we'll talk about that later, but parking issues for these closures. But just to summarize, um, you know, events, th- they are gonna cause issues down here, there's no doubt. I understand that, my heart goes out to the businesses, and I want you all to know that. But we have to strike the balance, we have to strike the balance, because what I believe is the fact that, even though there may be some closures, there are gonna be more people that come and visit Temecula that may see your shop, that wanna come back again when they're traveling in here. And I don't know if we have data on that, I don't know if that's something that we can even track. But, um, I know the city, uh, city council wants to create a heart of Temecula, which is here, and even as a mom, uh, if I can end on this, as a mom of five kids, having raised little ones in this area, uh, we know that kids have a good time, there's, you know, and we're having the police out here, and law enforcement, and they're going on all the different rides. It's very challenging when you have a lot of kids and a lot of families, to sometimes keep an eye on the child who can just sprint off. We all know that child who just wants to run off, and I'm gonna tell you, to be honest with you, I would be so concerned as a mother, if my child slipped underneath one of those poles and ran into a street while the, there is traffic going. That is coming from a mom's perspective of five kids, um, and I think any parent could have that perspective as well. And if there is just one child who got hurt, that would fall down on us. And so I cannot, as a councilwoman, see that, uh, being pushed forward and me being able to okay something like that. So as a heart as a mom, um, my recommendation would be, the rink to close the rink, uh, down those days, hundred percent. I would like to see, uh, a subcommittee talking about the closures, because I believe even the rink, we're gonna save money, uh, we're gonna save on the closures, and have the subcommittee take a look at how to go about moving forward and working with the businesses, and working with the community, and that way we draw it all together. So that's where I end on all that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Schwank.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and go, um, so thanks, everyone, for coming, I know it's obviously difficult. Um, but I do think we're, we're way closer than anyone maybe thought coming into this meeting, I, I just really do. I am a little butthurt, I will say that, I go to Luke's for lunch all the time, um, so I, maybe I need to wear my hat that says, like, I'm a council member, ask me a question, or something like that. If I can muster the two-hour wait to get into Goat and Vine, you know I'm there, right? Um, been to nineteen oh nine quite a bit with staff, um, so we, we do see what's going on in Old Town, right? And we understand, uh, the value, you're all successful because you're great restaurateurs, you produce a wonderful product, and you, you would do that, regardless of what happens down here, right? Like, you do a really good business down here because of the service you provide and the community you have. So, um, I'm excited that we have the businesses we have down here. So having said that, comma, but, um, so there's a lot of talk of OTTA, so like, OTTA doesn't represent all businesses, like, that's just a fact. Um, so we have to figure ways, um, to meet all the businesses in Old Town, uh, for sure. Um, and so that's sort of number one. But, but thinking about that in broader terms, like, the whole reason we started the Old Town Local Advisory Committee and moved it from the old, you know, the, uh, the, um, I can't even remember the name of what it was now, but it was essentially, yeah, the Old Town Local Review Board, it was essentially a glorified HOA. You know, they were talking colors and things like that, Ross, you know what that was like. It's totally changed, and we've added stakeholders to that process for a reason, um, to be able to have that communication. Um, so it's in, it's infancy, right? We can always do better, we can make it, uh, we can make it work better, and we should. We can also recognize that, uh, you know, business is tough, like, running a restaurant is very hard. If you're on the fourth floor, it's hard to have, like, like, sort of just walk-in traffic, right? Like, that foot traffic is hard when you're on the fourth floor. So we recognize that not all businesses are the same, right? If you're on the fourth floor, maybe you're next to a public parking lot, maybe you're in the middle of town where there's no parking, except for private lots. Which, we can have that discussion about the, the cost of some of the private lots that people are having to pay, right? So that's kind of like putting stressors on the system, uh, with respect to parking. We could always do things way better. I believe we need signage at the ends of town, so when you're coming in, you know what to expect, we don't currently have that. Uh, so you really, I mean, you can see it, I, I'm down here quite a bit, I, I don't live too far, sometimes we walk, I ride my bike, I skate down here. Um, so I see, you know, people turning on second, right, or turning on first, like, they're, they know, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zip around, and then they get to third, and they're like, oh wait, I can't go anywhere because it's closed. So I think we need to do a better job, um, sort of telegraphing that, um, at the end. The mayor put up some, some graphs, and, and I think it's a little misleading, because, and, and Mayor Protem, you mentioned it, like, coming out of COVID, um, was difficult, right? So like, part of what we experienced, uh, not just on, on COVID, on sort of like the shutdown stuff, but just like the, the overall tenor of, of everything that was going on in Old Town, uh, we thought, like, we needed to do better. And, uh, we did a survey in twenty twenty-one, and, and I have it here, it's available on the city's website, this is a community survey. Um, this is something that's like statistically valid, it's like a research firm that does this. Um, no disrespect to you, Mr. Mayor, but I don't think that going around, you know, with your questions is, is like valid research. Um, it's anecdotal, and that's fine, um, and that, those are valuable things. But here's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight from that survey. Um, of the things that people like most about Temecula, only five percent of respondents said Old Town. These are residents, these are people that live in Temecula, so only five percent of the people that live in Temecula, um, say they like Old Town. We said, okay, well, that's a problem. So let's see, um, you know, of the people that are coming to Old Town, it was about nineteen percent, so about one in five people, um, said they visit Old Town at least once a week. So only twenty percent of the people in Temecula even come down here once a week. Um, another twenty-four percent said they visit the area two to three times a month, the remaining respondents, it's more than half, um, don't come down here at all, you know, like, very often, or at all. And some of the things they cited, and these are, to your point, Mayor Protem, these were the things that we talked about, is that perception of safety. And it could, the same thing is true for the perception of parking, right? Like, but this was a specific question about su- safety. And it basically says, it says, as one might expect, feelings of safety declined after dark, um, with sixty-five percent indicating they feel safe walking alone. And Old Town wants the sun goes down, but only twenty percent, twenty-seven percent saying they feel safe, feel unsafe. So the idea of doing some events down here, um, especially in the evening, was to bring people down here and show them what Old Town is. Because I think we all re- can recognize that Old Town is not a dangerous place. I've never felt, um, danger, in any sort of danger in Old Town. So we're using this information to sort of inform our decisions about what happens coming out of the pandemic, and yeah, we've added events. I think if we weren't doing the ice rink, ever, like, I don't know that we'd be here at this level, right? I don't know that we'd, um, we would be there, that's a significant amount, uh, of, of closures, right? Thirty-eight closures, thirty-eight days. And, you know, I'm not as, um, much of a mover and shaker as our mayor, um, professes to be, but, um, I was down here when we were getting a preview of the drone show, for the, for the, uh, New Year's Eve, uh, uh, extravaganza. And we were sitting in the quad for a while, and we were waiting, they're having some technical difficulties with the drones, and, um, I'm looking across, and I'm thinking, gosh, you know, there's nobody at the, the rink, like, there's just no one there, it's just dead. And, but we're, you know, the streets closed, and, you know, I have photos on my phone from my kid's birthday there, like, I think we've, we've, we've thoroughly enjoyed that as a space, but I think it's run its course, I think it's time to, to move on. Um, I asked our, uh, Director of Community Services to put together just like a little proposal, uh, because I think there's a way to do something that's inviting, um, like adding, um, some decorations, or making sort of that town square park much more of a, um, a place to come hang out, right? Still be family-friendly in the holidays, but you're leaving the road completely open, so you're, you know, you're eliminating those thirty-eight days. So, you know, my hope is that, you know, at, at some point, we'll get some consensus to, to, to move forward on something like that. I do think part of the problem with what we're dealing with now is, um, you know, is a longer, more structured process, like, you know, Councilmember Stewart's on the Community Service Subcommittee, so that he's been totally subverted from this process until now. Uh, we rely on the, on that subcommittee process, and I think it's important, uh, to keep that. Um, and so maybe, you know, if this was a more drawn-out process, um, and, and we would have been able to lean on OTTA a little bit more, and they could have got a little more robust findings from some of the businesses, right? We could have done more outreach, there's much more we could do, um, to really have, uh, a, a conversation about this. I mean, I think there's, from the data that I have, there's a hundred and thirty-nine businesses, like, arch to arch. So, you know, and they're diverse businesses, right? Like, some of them aren't even open in the, at night, like, some of them close up, right? So we, you know, again, it goes back to, you know, not all businesses, um, are the same. Um, I do believe, like, I do like the comments of removing the chains, that's always sort of bothered me, the way that, that we do that. But I know it's hard, it's just another thing to do, um, to remove all those chains when we, when we do, um, when we do events down here. I mentioned the signage, um, and then I, I, I think my, the way that I'll end, and I, and I hope no one takes this in, in a disrespectful way, but like, the, the idea too is that the business community, I think, needs to work together better. I think that the way that, um, uh, if you look at maybe like a comprehensive parking plan for employees, so like, everyone's on the same page with parking, um, I think that would be helpful, um, we can always do more on our end, but I also think it's important from, for the businesses to also work together and be a, like, be a partner, right? Those lots that are beautifully paved out there now didn't exist not that long ago, there was a development agreement on that property, as soon as that development agreement lapsed, I reached out to Aaron and was like, hey, we need to get these lots open. Um, and they spun it up pretty quickly, they were dirt for the longest time, but at least they were places to park, really close to businesses that maybe have paid parking next to them, and, so they had, yeah, these nice lots, now they're paved, we've created access to the alley to allow for some ingress egress, so I think we're getting there. You know, my family had a restaurant down here for many years on Fifth Street, um, so we know how hard it is, I understand how hard it is to run a business, especially a restaurant business in an environment like this. Um, and, and I just, you know, our doors are always open, um, I'll get that shirt made that says, I'm a council member, come, come chat with me. Um, but I, I, you know, I'm, I'm here to support you all, but, um, at the same time, you know, we, we have to think about how these events bring a community together. And I think what defines Temecula is the way that we bring community together in a meaningful way. Um, and the way that this Old Town was designed, uh, the investments that we made are really designed to bring a community together, uh, so that we can share in, you know, uh, friendship, and we can share in food, and, and laughter, and, and build lasting memories, so that, um, you know, we just keep, build a strong community. So, I'll end there, but, um, I think I'm wholly supportive of, um, having the ice rink, you know, sort of letting them know, you can go to the mall or whatever it is, um, and then send this to a subcommittee, and we can kind of walk through, um, and, and focus not just on the Old Town events, uh, because there's more to events than Old Town, and so we should really think about, um, the whole entire system when we talk about events, so, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Ron.
So, so first, I, I, I wanna say that, you know, a couple of the comments said, well, you haven't really been listening, you haven't been talking to us. We're here, um, we're having these meetings specifically because of this, and I think one of the things everybody needs to sort of recognize is, the city doesn't always, you know, get everything perfect, right? I mean, we're all learning on how do you manage, you know, a very, I think, important resource to our community, um, effectively, right? The goal is to not only just increase the commerce and the opportunities for businesses in Old Town, but it's also increase community, right? And to, and, and, and that connection. I think the survey, and I will disagree with those folks who, who ran the survey, because I think the questions, um, don't quite answer the, uh, the issue. When you say only, you know, twenty percent of residents, you know, go to Old Town, blah, 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 well, you know, and you can say, well, it's an underutilized resource. You could ask the same question of Bird's All Park, or, you know, any of the other resources, and it may not be, you know, uh, uh, eighty percent of the community going there, it may be fi- five percent. The goal and the job of this city is to provide a portfolio of opportunities that meets the expectations and interests of everybody in our community at some level. So, you know, just saying, well, Old Town isn't, you know, visited by, you know, but five percent of the folks who really care about it, I don't think that's right at all. You know, I think that, uh, I think there's a flaw in that, in that, the way the survey instrument was, uh, was created, and I thought that from the time we got the survey instrument back. I won't, you know, I'm happy to disagree with those folks later, but point being is, Old Town is probably one of the most remarkable resources we have. And our job, like I say, is to facilitate our local businesses, if we're not doing that, we're failing, you know? But at the same time, like you say, a lot of people, even the owners here are saying, I, I love, I love the events, you know? And if, I'm even willing to take the hit when it comes to, you know, some of those events, because they are signature events that make Temecula, Temecula. And you're right, you know, offering a, a, you know, what, sixty thousand visitors to, you know, any particular event, I mean, that's, that's remarkable. All the, you know, commerce that happens because of that is substantial, we need to recognize that, we need to foster it. But we also need to realize that not everybody who comes to, say, the evening market, or the farmer's market for that matter, not everybody who comes to the market, wants to attend, you know, uh, an event in Old Town. Not everybody who wants to attend an event in Old Town wants to go to the local businesses, right? But they're all coming for a variety of needs, and so that goes back to this idea of a portfolio. You need that portfolio, because part of it is driving folks into Old Town. Now, before I left council last time, you know, a couple of years ago, I'll say, the conversation was really about exactly what, you know, you had said earlier, was, the, the night markets and things, and especially targeting, I, my understanding is, you know, Thursday nights, is because there wasn't a lot of activity in Old Town at that time. So it was, you know, provide, you know, and, and let's be honest, on a Thursday night, you're not having people from San Diego, you know, commute through the traffic just to visit that market, right? These are not, these are not the traditional weekend tourists coming to events, you know? So who are those folks that are coming here? Well, they're probably, you know, mostly local, uh, folks around the region. Is it a bad thing that we provide that, that service? I don't think so, unless you can demonstrate that it impacts those businesses because of the roads, road closures. Now we're sacrificing one over the other, and, and again, you know, every decision the city needs to make needs to be centered on those kind of two key points. Is it good for the community, is it growing community and fostering that, and is it good for local businesses? And if we're not meeting those or balancing those appropriately, then yeah, we've totally missed the mark. I will say, I, I, you know, the one graphic where it's like, ah, back in two thousand, two thousand and one, we had pretty low, that was COVID, man, we weren't doing any street closures in COVID. I mean, nobody was doing anything, so, you know, to see the ramp-up, I think it's, it's, you know, just a factor of everybody trying to recover. And we know businesses were impacted, but, and I don't know if the city manager or, or anybody else remembers the actual numbers on this, the number of businesses that actually closed in Old Town during that, I think, extreme economic crisis, was remarkably small compared to most of the other communities of like size and, and economy. And largely because we were one of the few that very early on said, we're gonna do outdoor seating, we're gonna, we bent over backwards to try and make sure businesses were open and maintained, right? And so, so that's what we're here for, and I just wanna, I wanna highlight that, because that's what we're, we're here for tonight. And I was glad to see this conversation, you know, and, and really, Mayor, uh, thank you for sort of picking this up, is, if we're, if we're missing the mark, and we tried something, and it's not quite doing what we think it needs to do, we need to be nimble enough to switch gears and, and try something else, you know? And be responsive to that, adaptive to that. So, uh, you know, a couple of other things I've- So, you know, a couple of other things I've, I've heard tonight is, you know, the OTTA. I, I don't think OTTA is, is doing a great job of representing all businesses in Old Town, you know? And I've heard that from a number of businesses in Old Town. So, you know, and and I think the disconnect too is, is that, you know, there are the very active, very vocal advocates who participate in all of those meetings, who help drive that, and and God love them for doing it. I think it's important. But you've got not just the business owners, but the property owners who, you know, also should be represented at some point too. Now, they're not running a business, but they're leasing all that space and they're supporting all of those businesses to be able to do it. And not everybody owns their property when they're, you know, that they're running a business in, you know? And so I don't think, you know, it's very difficult, and it always has been difficult for us, to gain a full perspective from Old Town. The other thing too I'll mention is, and I don't know how many years ago it was, but there were actually two competing OTTAs at some point because the business owners couldn't quite connect and and, you know, work together on this. And so the, as a city, we have always kind of struggled, as long as I've been here, to connect with the business community because, you know, we, it's hard to get a unified voice. We don't expect you all to come out here and say, twenty nine is the number, and that's what we all agree on. That, we know that's not going to happen. But at the same time, it's, it's hard because, you know, we only heard from five of you this evening. You know, I did my walk around too. I saw a couple of the businesses and things over the weekend and chatted with some, some friends and and folks that I know and, and, you know, asked their perspective on things. I know it's all anecdotal. I know it's, you know, not statistically valid, but I like to hear from folks. And and they're candid. They're honest about their opinions, you know? And I appreciate you all coming out here tonight and, and, you know, laboring with us on this, on this topic. The goal, I think, in my mind, is to find the balance of how many closures are appropriate. And, you know, it was interesting because in the staff report, they, they not only included, you know, the number of days and times of of closures and all of that. And let's be honest, you know, closures during, you know, holiday times are going to be much more impactful to some of our businesses than, you know, closures, you know, in non-holiday seasons when shopping or other things, you know, changes, right? And so if we're, you know, doing a cost benefit analysis really on this, and, you know, I think you had mentioned, well, you know, what does it mean when we see two hundred to five hundred people? Is that, you know, is that meaningful? And then other events are sixty thousand plus, you know? The cost benefit analysis for me is, how much money are we as a community investing in an event? And what is the return on that investment, right? And and sometimes, let's be honest, sometimes we just invest in things because they're good, they're fun, we enjoy them, right? And there's no tax revenue generated by the city. That's the point of Community Services. And they do a remarkable job of giving us, you know, unique opportunities that, again, make Temecula, Temecula. But thinking just purely fiscally, and I'll, I'll mention the ice rink too. Ten years ago, when I first got on the council, I was just like, why are, in God's name, do we have an ice rink in Southern California outdoors for like a month? You know, and at that time, we were paying roughly forty thousand dollars a year, I think, to have that thing, you know, subsidized, plus or minus. And I was just like, I, as a fiscal conservative, I was like, no, we cannot do this. And so I was like, you need sponsorships, you need, you know, and there was this proposal to like, every year, let's ramp up all of this so that the city isn't investing its own money in this, that it's being invested in by local businesses. That's how it gets paid for, because I just can't, it's just unconscionable for me to think that we're putting that kind of nickel into, you know, keeping ice around in Southern California, right? I was the only council member at that time that had that opinion, and so it was a really tough sell, and it didn't go. I am thrilled to see, and I haven't heard from you, Stu, but I'm thrilled to see here tonight that collectively, if I were to count votes, I think we're good with just get rid of the ice rink, right? I'm fully engaged in that, because the amount of time that that is closed, and I think the, the impact, and again, going back to the cost benefit, it just doesn't make sense. I would like to be able to look at every other event through that same lens, though. Is it valuable to the community? Does it provide, you know, some level of economic benefit? It doesn't have to be fifty fifty, right? But how do we, how do we value this thing economically or community wise? You know, I, I leaned over and and spoke to Stu very briefly, and, you know, part of me was just like, why, why can't we just make these decisions tonight and whittle down to twenty nine or eighteen or whatever the number is, right? And and he made a good point, and and he said, you know, he feels left out and sad because nobody respects the authority of the Community Services Commission. I'm, I'm just paraphrasing. But, but, but honestly, I, I, no, I think this, this takes a little bit more of of a scalpel, not a, not a hatchet, right? And we need to be a little bit more prospective on this. And so I, I would support putting this back to a Community Service Commission to take a look at this a little bit more carefully with the intent that, yeah, we definitely need to do, you know, a better job in in scaling this back. The last thing I would say, though, and I, I kind of mentioned this to the city manager's office this morning in conversations about this, is we're spending seventy eight thousand dollars now on an ice rink. You know, it's worse than I thought, you know? I mean, that's, that's, that's tough for me. And and part of me says, if we're going to make a decision to get rid of an ice rink, why wouldn't we, and again, this is where I'm going to rely on you, the business owners, the property owners, everybody who's working in Old Town, you all have to come together, you know? And and not just OTTA or something like that, but, you know, talk about creating a Business Improvement District or a BID. Because your opportunity as, you know, collectively, when you're paying dues, when you're getting involved in this, means that you collectively, as an organization, want to see, you know, a rising tide raises all ships, right? And so my proposal, and I know everybody's going to be a little bit whatever about this, but my proposal is, take that fund and say, you know, we'll match dollar for dollar everything that OTTA or whatever BID has created, match that, because how do you increase the, the utilization of Old Town resources? It's marketing, it's outreach, it's communications, it's social media, it's all the things that we could be investing in alongside all of these businesses in a collective effort to get folks here. So, you know, so I'm just saying, you know, I'd like the Subcommittee, if if everybody agrees to kick it to them, to take that into consideration and say, hey, here we've got an opportunity to put together over a hundred thousand dollars a year in marketing for Old Town to help all the businesses be more successful. Not only are we going to reduce the amount of traffic, you know, issues and everything else, and and God knows, we're trying to solve the parking issue because that has been a problem since I got on the council ten years ago. You know, but, but this one, I think, could really be a huge benefit and really bring local businesses and property owners together a little bit more on, on what's important and how we all, you know, collaborate on making this successful. I'll end by saying two quick things. One was, back in the day, I remember the farmer's market was opposed by just about everybody because it caused parking issues and traffic issues and everything else. And my last read of the businesses on the farmer's market was, we love it. Now, not everybody, I get that, but collectively, I think it's a, a big benefit. I also remember when the first proposal came out, and I, I'm afraid to say that I was probably the one that put it on the table, to get rid of the wooden sidewalks. And oh my God, did people get upset with me on that one. It's like, these wooden sidewalks are historic. And no, they're not. They were put in the nineties. You know, these are not old historic sidewalks. This was just a redevelopment effort to make it look cool. And clearly, we missed the mark because I would see people trip and and I would see ADA access issues and all this. And I'm like, can we please get rid of the wooden sidewalks? And I remember the business owners were so opposed to that at one point. I said, fine. Exactly what I said, I'm saying to you tonight. Create a bid, raise the funds, and you manage all the sidewalks, if it's that important to you. And all the business owners were like, you know, we're not too opposed to the sidewalks disappearing, right? That's how we collaborate on this stuff, right? I think there's an opportunity here. I think we can use this, you know? It, it's surprising because a, a small issue like, oh, street closures has come to, you know, this kind of community discussion. But I think it's a huge opportunity, and I do think we can do a better job supporting our local businesses. So I'll end there.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stewart?
All right. First off, I want to thank Community Services for doing an amazing job on the twenty nine and a half days, paring down from, what was it, seventy eight total?
Eighty two.
So, eighty two? Okay. So to get it down to twenty nine and a half days, that was remarkable. But I think there's still work that could be done. I think we could pare it down even more. But I think it's going to take, like Matt was saying, I think we need to use a scalpel. We really need to examine what events that are left, which ones are really beneficial to our city, to our citizens, to our business community. And I understand business. I'm in business. I've been in business for forty three years right now. And so, so I understand, but I also understand sometimes you have to do things to attract the customer base to you that costs you. I mean, that's, and anybody who owns a business knows that, you know? You gotta, you gotta sacrifice to actually get in the end. And, and, you know, in my business, I've had a barber shop here for forty years. And in that forty years, the one thing I hear the most, and I hear it even more consistently now than I've ever heard it before, is I never go to Old Town. I mean, it's just not safe down there. It's so crowded. There's, it's, there's no parking. And it's like, have you been down on a Tuesday night? Have you been down on a? And most of the restaurants that I know, that's when they struggle the worst, is that midweek traffic pattern. It's very weak, and it's hard to even break even a lot of nights, except for Goat and Vine, they, they do really well. But, but a lot of these restaurants are struggling just to try to make, make it happen. They, they, if they're going to profit at all, it's on the weekends. And those aren't usually our locals. I'm down here every single Friday night, every single, not every single Saturday night, but most Saturday nights. And I cruise, and I cruise up and down Front Street. And I'm looking at families who are down here with small kids, seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. I've just been times I've been cruising at nine o'clock, and there's, there's still families down here. So it's a totally safe, family-friendly environment. And that's what a lot of these events are designed to create, is that kind of atmosphere that someone could come down for the, the market that we have out here, the street, the Sunset Market. And to get our locals down here, because that's who we gotta get. We have to get our locals to want to come down here on a regular basis and eat and enjoy the, just the nightlife. I mean, I love it down here on the weekend, during the week. I, my Rotary Club meets at Gamely Cowboy on Wednesday nights. And I walk from City Hall down there, and then on the way back, I'll stop at the Blues Club. And then I'll stop somewhere else. And, but there's, there's activities happening here on a Wednesday night. But most people don't even know it because they're, they don't come down because they just feel like it's not safe. It's, there's no parking, there's too much traffic. And if you've been down this, even Front Street, on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night, it's not a lot of traffic. It, you kind of go down pretty easily. So my position is, I want to kill the, I, I want to take the staff's recommendation. So I would like to make that motion. I would like the motion to accept the staff's recommendation with the no ice rink, the twenty nine point five, with the caveat that it goes back to the Community Services Subcommittee to try to pare down the events even more, to see if there's events we can combine. And they've already done some of the legwork, but there's also opportunities for us to kind of move some events offsite. So it doesn't have to happen here. So we might be able to get it down to twenty five. Who knows? Maybe twenty. I don't know. So, but it'll give us a chance to actually do the legwork and and take the time. I, I just, I don't like the hatchet idea. Let's just kill these things and be done with it. It's like, no, these are community events that have been going on. Some are new, some are old, but all, to me, very important to, to the citizens and to the people of Temecula. So I would like to take the time to actually, you know, examine it a little bit more. So that's my motion, that we accept staff's recommendation, but kick it down to Subcommittee for possible more paring down.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Alexander?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that part up about the safe, about the safety. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we added the hot team and metro teams down there, because we wanted to make sure that there was community between the law enforcement and the sheriffs. And also, we had a pulse on what was going on, that it was safer, and also had that community relationship with the, with the business owners. And I've been down there. I've, I've been down there till two in the morning, not by myself, but with the sheriff, and being able to see that. And it's been very a good relationship. And I've gone down there at other times with the sheriff and done ride alongs, and it's been a good relationship for what I'm seeing. So I'm just thankful. But yes, we have come out of almost a, a little bit of a pit, in a sense, from COVID. And it's really, we've embraced it, and we're just now trying to figure out, I think, what's best. So I thank you for bringing that up, because it's a good point about safety.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, you know, there's been talk about having the events and having the road open. And we've had very lengthy conversations with our sheriffs. And that was, the consensus is, everyone loves the community. That's the word, that's the, what you hear from the businesses, that's what you hear from the council. If it was possible to have all these events with keeping Mercedes Road open, everyone, I think, would be, absolutely, that sounds great. But it's been the direction of our Chief of Police and a Lieutenant here, that we need to close Mercedes down if we hold an event in front of City Hall, right? That's, it's, it's black and white. There's no, we've looked at, hey, what if we back up the events in the booths for the Sunset Market or all these other events? We back them up twenty yards, it still doesn't configure, you know, to the, to the level of safety that they desire. And that's something that we have taken into consideration when, when talking about this. And and like we've heard, we've, we've heard that these events bring the community, and we all agree. And community is huge, and it's finding that balance. And I just want to touch on real quick, that graph that I put up, that just started from twenty twenty one. So the graph that I showed you, it was from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. That we, I didn't put in COVID there because, like they said, COVID was nonexistent. There was no events being held in City Hall. So although it may have looked misleading, all that was, was factual data on the days per year that Mercedes Re, was, Mercedes Road was closed. So although it may have appeared misleading, it was purely factual. And, you know, to talk about the, the, me going and talking to businesses and the businesses' opinions as being anecdotal, that may be, that may be factual. Your, your opinions may be anecdotal. But I take them more seriously than a, a, a survey that we contract out with a third party. I would argue that the, a survey is less statistical than a, than me talking to you and hearing the words out of your mouth. And and I think we all have to ask ourselves, who takes surveys, you know? Not many people take surveys. I don't think I've ever taken a survey online. And another thing is, you know, it talks about, hey, we're here. We've always been here. We want you to come talk to us. I think we need to realize is that people do not want to come here. Businesses do not want to come here. The public does not want to come here. I don't understand. To me, that's an easy concept. Before I was on council, I would watch a few meetings online. I would never come to City Hall, even if I had an issue. You just don't come to City Hall. The, the public doesn't come to City Hall. There's twenty people in the audience, and they're all businesses and people that have a very particular interest in this issue. People do not come to City Hall. I will not wear a shirt that says, I am a council member, but you will see me in your businesses telling you I'm a council member and asking for your opinion. I will never ask you to come here. I will come to you with the hope that I can help you out. That is just who I am, and that's the way I operate. But ultimately, I think it's our job as a government entity to provide the infrastructure, provide the parking. You know, you keep hearing, hey, this frog analysis, this is going to be great for our city. And I disagree from the get go. I think the frog analysis, and I could be, and I'll be the first one to come here and say I'm wrong when this happens. I think the frog analysis will tell us that we need more parking, very plain and simple. We do not have enough parking. You can, you can have all the data and all the analysis that you want, put the sensors, which we, which I voted to put the sensors there. I want to see the data, because maybe I'm wrong. Maybe this data comes back and says, you know what, there was three hundred parking spots that we didn't know existed. And here they are, and we're going to have an app that directs you to them. I would, I think I'm going to be correct in my analysis of the frog data, but I could be wrong. And I hope to come back here and I'll be the first one to admit that I'm wrong. And that data analysis has laid, led, led to a great parking opening for all of Old Town, and you all have more parking for your businesses. But I think we agree, community is, is vitally important. And it's balancing community events and keeping infrastructure in place. It is very, it's, it's a simple, simple concept for me. Provide the infrastructure, the parking spaces, the road access to allow businesses to succeed. We stay out of your way. And it's been set up here that the businesses here are what make Old Town, Old Town. And that couldn't be more true. And as we've heard from businesses, there's a possibility of long-term damages. So you hear, in the audience, you hear the Goat and Vine, you hear nineteen oh nine, you hear Corbo Wine and Tea, you hear Temecula Lavender, you hear Luke's. These are all Temecula well-known names. But if we continue at the rate we're going, if we don't listen, those names won't be here in five to ten years. So it's, yes, that you are what make Old Town, Old Town. And I, and I will repeat that, and I will repeat that, and I will repeat that. You, the people and the businesses and the residents, are what make Old Town, Old Town. Our job is to provide the necessary infrastructure to allow you to operate and succeed or fail on your own. And finding that balance is vitally important. And as you've heard, last year we had eighty two and a half days. It sounds like the consensus up here is going to be twenty nine and a half days, which I will of course vote for, but my hope is, in the Subcommittee, which I want to say, Stu, you weren't subverted on purpose. This, the way this went down is when I called Aaron, the direction was to meet with TCSD President Schwenk. After I met with TCSD President Schwenk, you cannot meet with Schwenk in a Subcommittee because the Brown Act does not allow three council members to speak. So it was not a purposeful submission by our part, by any So it was not a purposeful submission um by our part by any means to keep you out of the loop. That is just the way the California law works. So you were subverted for that specific reason. But I absolutely agree that this should be kicked back to the Subcommittee. I hope that Subcommittee, because we won't talk until it comes back before us, I hope they take into consideration the uh Community Services District opinion and advisory of looking at moving the Sunset Market to one time per week, looking at always conjoining that with the summer concert series, dwindling that twenty-nine and a half days, hopefully below twenty days, because that is what I would prefer to see. And we see the ice rink, you know, thirty-eight days, you keep hearing, ah, thirty-eight days is a lot, but for some reason, when we forget that, you know, around thirty days is also the same similar number to thirty-eight, thirty days of road closure is still a lot for the businesses, even if it's only thirty days right now and it's a great uh jump from eighty-two, it is not enough. Uh and I hope the Subcommittee puts in the necessary work and finds and collects the data and analyzes it and brings back to this council um less than twenty-nine and a half days. But I heard a motion from Councilmember Stewart.
I'll second. We can call the question.
That has been first and second. Do you have everything you need from us? Twenty-nine and a half days removal of the ice rink with further discussion on limiting more days into the Subcommittee with the Community Services District. That passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you all again for coming out and letting us hear your thoughts. We will move on to business item number eleven. Receive presentation regarding local wildfire mitigation efforts in the city and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of Councilmember Ron. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As you just mentioned, we're going to present a wildfire preparedness and prevention um discussion for you tonight. I know we're all painfully aware of the tragedies that happened recently in L.A., the Eden Fire and the Palisades Fire. Um and as you can imagine, uh the city as well as council members have been receiving questions and concerns uh regarding what is the city's position, what is the city doing in 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 um in an effort to keep the community safe and so that that tragedy doesn't happen here? So on February eleventh, uh at the request of uh Councilmember Ron and with concurrence to the rest of the council, staff was directed to come back with a presentation on two items. First being, uh what is the city currently doing regarding wildfire preparedness and prevention? And uh we have we have uh Chief Crater as well as our Emergency Manager, Michael Alfred, here tonight to talk um, you hear directly from the experts on that issue. And the second is to identify tools and opportunities that may enable the city to act quickly to mitigate wildfire risks as we move forward into the future. Uh so we're gonna jump right in um so uh to the first item, what is the city of Temecula currently doing to prepare and prevent wildfires? And I thought before I turn it over to uh Chief Crater, um one of the things that um at a broader level um was important to um bring up is that uh the community of Temecula, and it's already been said here a couple of times tonight, um the number one priority as identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan, which is the vision document that governs all decision-making uh within the city that was approved by the council. This is directly out of that document, the number one core value for the city of Temecula is a safe and prepared community. I thought that was important to just mention before we dive into everything and hopefully everything you see tonight um is a reflection uh of that number one core value. So this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Crater to go through what the Temecula Fire Department is doing to prepare and respond to wildfires.
Thank you. Yeah, here in the city of Temecula, uh Fire Department has a robust plan for wildland response in the city. Our firefighters are well-trained. We train in uh wildland urban interface. We actually, as CalFire wrote a book on this, and train other departments on uh these strategies and tactics. And once a year, we get together and uh we do do wildland training drills and make sure that uh all of our engine companies, hand crews, and our department is well-versed on the wildland urban interface uh firefighting methods. We also have a large access to a large ground and air resources through our emergency agreements with the state. Basically, you don't have to call the state, we're already here. All the employees that cover Riverside County CalFire stations are state employees plus the other agreements that we have to access uh CalFire resources as far as aircraft, uh ground attack, uh dozers, hand crews, and et cetera. Uh we have been doing fuel reductions in lands around Temecula, specifically um when we're talking about the east winds and fires coming uh from wine country or whatever that may be, from the east to the west during Santa Ana events. We have done uh several uh fuel reduction um several fuel reduction uh projects in Lake Skinner and in French Valley, per se, and also into Glen Oaks. We have plans to continue that. Our forester here in the unit sends crews out uh daily uh on these projects. Now, they're not in Temecula or uh around Temecula, so to speak, right now, but they're working on the mountaintop uh around Idyllwild to complete that project. And then there's opportunity to move them, you know, in and around the city. Fire prevention, oh, go back. Our fire prevention efforts for new construction in the city meets uh the current fire hazard severity zones and standards that have been set uh by the fire hazard severity maps. So our buildings are built to that standard. And also, state resources allow us to surge uh engines and equipment into the city in case of emergency. Next slide. We have a number of programs on the CalFire website and on the city's website, Ready Set Go, uh for residents. It educates them on being prepared uh for wildfire. We also have Fire Wise, My Safe Riverside is in collaboration, they're pretty much the same thing. But uh expanding the Fire Wise programs and our HOA to me is important. That way, uh our residents are getting these checklists, also how to do home hardening, how to be safe in the home, and how to be prepared uh for wildfire. And it also gives guidelines on what the property should look like, a hundred feet of clearance, five feet of hardscape around your home to reduce uh embers from catching hedges on fires and things of that nature, uh which directly go into the attic. Also, uh attic spaces and vents, uh proper sizes of what that uh the wire mesh in there should be for homes. I don't think we talk about it enough, but these firebrands get into the attic and that's what really burns your house down. So I think more with the the Fire Wise and My Safe Riverside, that information is there and we're also out uh in the community um talking to residents about being fire-safe. Next slide. Some of the things that I'd like to see in the city as a fire-safe council stood up, we'll have to have more discussion on what that looks like, where it's gonna be housed and who's gonna run it. But I do have some ideas on that. CalFire is also hiring a battalion chief to specifically work uh with fire-safe councils and uh give them information and prop them up and get them on the right track. That battalion chief be responsible for all the fire-safe councils in Riverside, but I'd like to work with our partners to see us get a fire-safe council inside the city limits. What that does is uh it brings grant opportunities. Fire-safe councils are the ones that get grant monies so we can do these projects in our cities and help our residents say they can't afford, you know, to harden their home. These monies can go toward that. Public outreach is conducted also with our firefighters and Riverside County Fire Department PIO, also the city's uh PIO and the city is always sending out information on fire prevention tips, resources throughout the year, e-blast, social media, mailings, newspaper articles. And I I think the information is there, it's just getting the community interested in it and wanting to uh, you know, learn some things. I think with the recent fires, obviously, it shed a light on a lot of things uh that some folks never thought of. I do want to leave you with this, though. Are we at a risk if if Mother Nature pops up and and gives us eighty mile-per-hour winds? Sure. I think when the wind blows, a lot of bets are off. But I can say the the amount of resources that we have available and the training we have uh gives us a much better shot at containing these fires and protecting our community, especially here in the city of Temecula. One thing I'd like to draw on is um we don't have dead-end roads that are one-way, you know? Most of our roads are are very well-maintained. There's access to hydrants and we don't have twenty-foot brush surrounding our homes in a canyon. So the terrain is very different. I'm not saying that it can happen. Our community needs to be prepared for the worst and I think that's why we're giving this presentation tonight to shed a light on what we have and and I think where we're going.
And that'll be Michael.
Through the Office of Emergency Management, we've created the Community Preparedness Backpack Program. It's a program that was developed in concert with a local vendor, Ready America, that helps give us the opportunity to champion champion preparedness by providing a starter backpack for community members at a very low price. If you were to purchase the same exact backpack with the same items inside it from Home Depot or Lowe's, you're gonna pay eighty-five to ninety dollars. Ours is only forty-five ninety-nine. For community preparedness and outreach, we do significant number of fair attendants. We do community presentations upon request to HOAs, some of our senior living facilities and skilled nursing facilities, as well as some of our churches. And then we also have a very robust CERT program within the city, which is part of the Temecula Citizen Corps. We are currently at fifty-seven members strong and continuing to grow by the month. We offer five CERT classes per year, two for adults, two for teenagers, and this, beginning of this year in January, we offered our first Spanish program to the community. Next slide.
Chief Crater.
Sorry. A lot of people ask about Alert California and the uh wildfire preparedness. We have cameras, we have really good coverage in the city. I would say ninety percent of the city is uh covered by these cameras, as you can see on the map here. These cameras use e uh the artificial intelligence to detect smoke and alert uh South Ops, which manage manages these cameras to a fire. And they're able to determine uh what the fire is and does the state need to have a response to the incident?
Under the Office of Emergency Management, there's several things that we've been working on in the last four years since I was hired on. One thing to note is the city does have a full-time emergency manager. We have a fifty-two position dedicated Emergency Operations Center Incident Management Team that supports the city's response and recovery efforts. We also have a fully-trained twenty-five-person mass care and shelter team to support our shelter operations should those be necessary. Next slide. For planning, currently, we have an emergency operations plan, a FEMA-approved local hazard mitigation plan. Just the end of last year, we developed our first extreme weather plan to discuss issues with related to Santa Ana winds, extreme heat, as well as extreme cold. We have a power outage and public safety power shut-off plan, a new disaster debris management plan. We have a very robust plan for mass care and shelter, rapid needs assessment to get eyes on what's happening in the immediate aftermath of a disaster, as well as our local hazard mitigation plan. Next slide. For systems that are currently operated by the Office of Emergency Management, we have our Mass Notification or Alert and Warning System, which is currently provided by Rave Mobile Systems through a contract with the State of California that provides this service to the city for free. We also have our primary and redundant backup emergency communications radio network through the city that operates on both the eight-hundred and four-hundred megahertz bands. For equipment, we now have a very large mass care and shelter equipment standard that we are meeting. We have a nice Conex box that is dedicated strictly to the Community Recreation Center for the purpose of them being our primary shelter. Additionally, we have two mass care and shelter trailers, one on each end of the city, in the north end and the south end, in order to handle issues on those sides of town where the primary shelters are at our high school gyms. We also maintain a very large N95 cache in the event that we need to provide respiratory protection to the community. And again, we do have redundant communication systems in-house. For training, we have a very robust training and exercise program that is all codified through our Integrated Preparedness Plan. This outlines a three-year proposal of what our planning, training, and exercise activities are going to be, all with a single goal in mind, getting our incident management team used to working together, working as a team, and tackling different kinds of situations so that they are ready to respond, they're comfortable, and they're confident in what they're doing when they're in the EOC. For contracts, we've been pretty busy over the last four years. We currently have a prime contractor for our catastrophic disaster debris removal. We have mutual aid agreements with the city of Murrieta for the sharing of emergency management resources and personnel, where if I'm absent for the city for any duration of time, she covers us as I do with the city of Murrieta. That agreement has actually proved very beneficial already when Murrieta had a couple fires off the freeway last year and I was actually in running their Emergency Operations Center while their EM was on vacation. We have a mutual aid agreement to provide amateur radio coverage services through the Golden Triangle Amateur Radio Club, where we are housing their repeater. But in return, in the event of an emergency or disaster, we get primary use of that amateur radio repeater for emergency communication should we lose our primary and redundant systems. We have an agreement with the American Red Cross for providing us support with mass care and sheltering, as well as the Salvation Army who also does sheltering. They offer clothing services and will be our prime vendor for feeding during emergencies. And then we have an agreement with the California Ranch Company for large animal evacuations and an agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the use of the Presidential IPAS System or Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, which is what we use to issue WEA's in emergency. Next slide. Under grants for our preparedness grant programs, we utilize the State Homeland Security Grant Program, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, and CalFire's Wildfire Preparedness Grant to supplement efforts in emergency management. Currently pending items, we have an agreement with Team Rubicon to help out with disaster debris removal for those citizens and community members that don't have the capacity to do it themselves, such as our elderly. We are pending an agreement with the school district to use the gyms as primary locations for mass care and sheltering. And then just last week, it was approved by the city manager, the Office of Emergency Management will undertake the development of the city's first citywide mass evacuation plan. That will start here in the next couple of months. I'm currently building up, working on building our core team of planning members and those that we're going to invite from the community, as well as our partners across the county. Next slide.
Thanks, Michael. Uh I'm gonna speak to some of the city's current and long-range planning efforts. So in November of twenty-twenty-four, the city updated Title Eight regarding hazardous vegetation or also known as weed abatement. That update included graphics and simple language regarding uh buffers and defensible space between homes and vegetation. And also with regard to this ordinance, all properties, but especially vacant properties, are required to be maintained throughout the year and inspections are conducted annually by code enforcement. Next slide. In addition, our planners worked with Cal Poly Pomona and Texas A&amp;M to evaluate city policies related to land use and preventing wildfires. This process is called PERS and it's a Plan Integration for Resilience Scorecard. The documents that we evaluated included the General Plan, the Quality of Life Master Plan, and the Urban Forest Management Plan. And we went through that process of evaluating the policies and goals. We received a scorecard and then recommendations to make those policies and goals more specific and more measurable. And those recommendations will be included in our General Plan update. and more measurable, and those recommendations will be included in our general plan update. Next slide, please. Uh, we also, the city was awarded a CAL FIRE grant to prepare a CWPP, or a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, for a hundred and seventy-seven acres at the confluence of the Temecula and Marietta Creeks on both sides of the I fifteen, just south of the Temecula Parkway interchange. So looking at this map, hopefully you can pick out, uh, the I fifteen running north-south, and then Temecula Parkway running east-west. And then the various colors, the dark blue represents flood control property, the green represents city property, the light blue is owned by California Department of Fish and Wildlife. There is a sliver under the I fifteen, which is CAL Trans right-of-way, and then the yellow is Bureau of Land Management land. So there's, in this area, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, there's a lot of different ownership and a lot of coordination that needed to take place. Um, but the goal of that plan is to reduce wildfire fuels. Next slide, please. And as part of that planning effort, um, the process included a risk assessment based on vegetation, slope, access to the property, proximity to homes, and other factors. And as you can probably tell, uh, the legend indicates that red represents extreme risk for wildfires, orange is a high risk, yellow is moderate, and green is low. And in that document, there are three very specific recommendations. The first is to remove invasive, invasive plants and restore native vegetation. The second is to create those hundred-foot buffers to create the defensible space. And then the third is public outreach, so that neighbors and residents understand the concept of home hardening and hopefully implementing fire-adapted communities. Next slide.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, something that the city does ongoing, and it's, it's just worth mentioning, is that we're constantly communication with our, uh, go- other government agencies and stakeholders, um, including CAL Trans. Um, Matt mentioned the right-of-way under the fifteen freeway. That's, um, something we're working on right now. We're trying to get CAL Trans to come down and take a look at what can be done under the freeway in terms of vegetation mitigation. Ranch California Water District, also very involved with them on an ongoing basis, but right now, we're actually having conversations with them about vegetation, vegetation clearance on their properties within the city and in the surrounding areas. And just a side note, I know that there was a, a lot of talk about, uh, fire hydrants during the, uh, the fires in LA. Uh, we have received communication from Ranch California Water District that they remain, uh, maintain a robust, uh, system of maintenance and check them regularly, and that they would be willing to come to council and give a presentation on that if the council wanted them to. So, uh, we can, we can certainly reach out to them and, and work that out. Uh, Pachanga Tribe, obviously very involved with the Pachanga Tribe. Uh, the staff is in continual, uh, uh, communication with them on many, many issues. Uh, but right now, specifically, staff is working with their, uh, their team to potentially do some vegetation clearing along Pachanga Creek, which is, uh, next to the Rainbow Canyon uh, community. Uh, so that's, that work is ongoing. And then one of the, um, most important is Riverside County Flood Control District, which is the main property owner for all the, the big creeks and towns, Temecula Creek, Marietta Creek, uh, Santa Gertuitas, and others. Um, and we met with them recently at the staff level to discuss, um, our concern with the vegetation growing in the creeks, and, um, particularly Temecula Creek, uh, to start off. Um, uh, and of course, we were asked, uh, staff was asked to look at immediate mitigation measures for that creek. And I have a little bit of drone footage here, just to give you a sense of what is going on in that creek. You can see it's, it's, it's got a serious amount of vegetation. Over here on the right is the California Sunset Neighborhood. This is Temecula Parkway. At the top, you see the I fifteen freeway on the, the other side of the screen, and the golf course is Temecula Creek Inn, which is owned by, uh, the Pachanga Tribe. Um, of particular concern, um, uh, i- is the area along the edge here where, uh, the California Sunset Neighborhood is. Um, part of the CWPP was, uh, to, uh, have a hundred-foot buffer, uh, cut in there to protect the homes. So I have, uh, very good news, and that is after that conversation we had with Riverside County Flood Control District, uh, they went ahead very quickly and, um, began a project to cut in a hundred-foot buffer, a fuel reduction buffer, um, along the California Sunset Neighborhood, which is right here. So in the video we just showed, we were looking this way. Here's the fifteen freeway, and this yellow line indicates the extent of their project, which goes from the fifteen freeway all the way along the neighborhood, goes up to the Pachanga Parkway Bridge, and then actually goes into Pachanga Creek and goes up to the Rainbow Canyon Bridge. So that is a really great development, and staff went on a field trip down there to, um, take a look at the creek, and we actually came across, uh, the teams that were down there doing the fuel reduction. Uh, here's a couple of photos. We were down there with Chief Crater, uh, city staff, as well as, uh, Chief Bill Weiser, who's the chief for Riverside County, and got a firsthand look at some of the work that's being done. You can see in this photo, the, this is the houses in the background. Houses are all along this slope as well. So, um, this is a testament to the proactive work, um, that staff's been doing with flood control, as well as the, uh, many years of building up relations, relationships with their staff, and it's, it, um, in this case, has been very beneficial. So that completes, uh, the first portion, which talks about what we, uh, have in place. Um, and this is now the second section, is to talk about, uh, what's out there, um, as potential tools or opportunities to mitigate risk going forward. Um, and the first thing that I want to talk about is obviously the governor's declared state of emergency, uh, which includes a suspension of certain portions of SEQA. Um, and that the listing is there, and they all have to do with removal of hazardous vegetation, creation of defensible space, reduction of fuels, um, uh, and, and, and that's great. So we, we see this as being a, uh, a, a big tool for us moving forward. We still have some things to learn. It's new. Um, one of the things is, we, we need to, uh, understand more, is there's still a requirement for the state to approve the work that, um, we may potentially get involved in, so we want to understand exactly what that means. But I think the intent is very clear. The, the spirit of this from the state is very clear, is that they're, they're seeking to get at least some portions of SEQA out of, SEQA out of the way when it comes to, um, uh, fuel reduction, when it comes to wildfire, and that's, that's a, that's a good thing. On the legislative and grant opportunities front, we're, as you can imagine, there are many bills that are floating around right now. I'm, I'm monitoring at least eight, and Randy may have others, and there probably will be more, as this is a, a hot topic across the state, um, uh, for, for obvious reasons. So we'll continue to monitor those, and if anything pops up or looks like it's, um, going to be realistic or actually happen, we will certainly, uh, inform the council and, um, and look to implement. Uh, on the, uh, on the grant side, there's some citywide evacuation planning grant opportunities that, um, uh, Michael was talking about. There's a U.S. Department of Transportation Protect Program grant. There's some WR COG work in this, uh, they're doing a study that's, that could potentially, uh, be helpful for us in our grant, um, applications. There's a CAL Trans, uh, SDP grant, uh, that we'll be looking at. Um, and then on the vegetation clearing and fuel reduction side, so there's the CWPP, which was Matt was, uh, mentioning before. We've already got the grant for the first phase, and that was the plan itself, and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be, um, uh, putting in an application for the implementation phase, which would actually be the removal of invasive species. Um, and there's also a couple of, of FEMA grants that we'll be looking into, and of course, there's the earmark process that we try to take advantage of every year. There are existing opportunities, they're just worth mentioning, these are already on the books, they've been on the books. There's County Ordinance six ninety-five, which allows the fire chief, um, the county fire chief to permit hundred-foot buffers for health and safety reasons under, under specific conditions. There's a SEQA category, uh, categorical exemption in Section fifteen, which also deals with vegetation clearance up to a hundred feet in specific circumstances. Uh, one that we just recently learned of, which is, uh, being, i- i- which, which the rules of which were being followed by the Flood Control District, they didn't actually get the permit, which is called a, a wild, uh, uh, a cougar permit, is what they referred to it as, and it's a permit that allows you to do vegetation clearance of invasive species to allow for more efficient wildlife corridor movement. So that's, that was a new one to us, but hey, we'll take, um, uh, anything we can get. So that's, we learned something. And then of course, as Matt mentioned, the city's municipal codes, we have hazardous vegetation, which, uh, applies to, uh, private property and the clearance of it every single year through our weed abatement program. So we've heard a lot, there's, uh, potentially some next steps, um, uh, before we get into the conversation. Obviously, continue our multi-agency and stakeholder discussions, those are starting to bear fruit in this arena, and we'll continue to do that. Um, as Chief Crater mentioned, uh, continue to pursue the fire risk reduction community status with the Board of Foresters, the firewa- uh, further in, uh, integrate firewise principles into the HOA communities, which is, is, uh, seems like low-hanging fruit that we should be engaging our HOAs, um, uh, in this space. Uh, establish a fire safe council, go after the second phase of the CWPP implementation, uh, grant, uh, and, and advance the citywide evacuation planning, and go after that grant that Michael's, uh, referring to. Uh, obviously, continue to monitor our legislative, um, opportunities as they pop up. Identify and apply for state and federal wildlife prevention grants, as I mentioned. Utilize the authority under the state of emergency, uh, where appropriate. Um, uh, work with CAL Trans to clear the right-of-way under I fifteen, and we can talk about that more, I'm sure that will be brought up. Uh, and then work with the stakeholders to mitigate the west side of the I fifteen in the Temecula Creek, Marietta Creek confluence. That is a very, uh, complicated area, as Matt was mentioning, with all the different ownership interests, um, and different environmental, uh, sensitivities. And then of course, go after the, uh, the CWPP implementation grant. So that concludes our presentation. Uh, we'll, uh, we'll flip it back over to, um, the council for discussion, and of course, we're available for any questions or comments.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Just want to hear the staff report one more time, to really hammer it in there. Do we have any public comments tonight? No public comments. Thank you. Uh, I will kick it off to Councilmember Ron for a discussion.
Well, thank you. Um, first, thanks staff for a great report there, and, and part of the, I think, the reason why I think it was important this evening to get that report was to recognize the amount of work that has already been done to help mitigate the risk in, in Temecula. Uh, the other piece was to, look, the, the risk is high. Um, I'll, I'll say that, you know, we were talking about in the, the slide that you showed, i- if you could bring that one slide up, the yellow and red map, uh, of the city, uh, hazard severity zones that were identified. You know, the original map, as it was produced by the consultants, used the traditional modeling of what is identified as risk. And in that original version of the analysis, it only showed sort of the very edge of the community in that first kind of row or so of homes. That's not the reality out there anymore. You know, urban conflagrations are the reality today. Code, as far as I'm concerned, and I think a lot of my colleagues agree with me on this too, is insufficient. The National Fire Protection Association standards for what constitutes, you know, protection and community resilience is insufficient. The modeling and the way we look at our community risk is clearly insufficient, right? The, the modern fires, they're not, why, I don't, you know, we need to stop using the term wildfire. It is an urban interface fire, it is an urban conflagration. There's, you know, when was the last time we saw just vegetation burning and no assets at risk? That's a wildfire. It doesn't exist in California anymore, you know? So we need to sort of accept that reality. We also need to stop using the term, you know, and I, I appreciate nobody saying it tonight, but the term wildfires or fire season. There's no season anymore. You know, the largest, ten of the largest fires in California's last twenty years have happened in the middle of the winter, you know? So the reason I thought this was important, and it was, it sort of was coincidental with the unfortunate disaster in Los Angeles, you know, when I came back on council, it, it had been two years, we have a CWPP in place, which is great, for arguably the highest risk portion of our city. Um, that CWPP is in place, but we never got around to doing the vegetation clearing, and part of it is, we're waiting for grants and waiting for funding and things. And, you know, I'm, I'm at the point where, and I was, I was thrilled to see, and, and kudos to County Flood for really jumping on this quickly and, and listening to the city of Temecula and, and being as aggressive as they have been on this, because there's, there's no time to wait, you know? We can't just wait on a grant cycle. In fact, the fuel mitigation, uh, grants that we talk about from CAL FIRE, most of that was cut from this year's budget until after the, the fires, and then the governor replaced those funds back into CAL FIRE's budget, you know? So we can, you know, so part of what, you know, I want to talk about here tonight, and these are wonderful recommendations, I think this is the direction we need to go, you know, for our city, but one of the top priorities needs to be, let's just finish the fuel reduction program down in Temecula and Pachanga Creeks, right? We've gotten this far with, with County Flood, uh, we need to work with CAL Trans to finish their portion of that creek, whether we do it ourselves and send them a bill, or whether they cooperate and, and, you know, do it themselves, either way, it needs to get done. Um, the, and the other is, you know, all of the remainder parcels, you know, within that footprint of, of the high-risk area, needs to get treated immediately. We have a very short window of time where we can treat the fuels without causing additional fire risk from heavy equipment and sparks and all the other stuff, right? So, you know, my recommendation is that we move aggressively to do that, regardless of grants and, and all the other stuff. You know, I think it's, it's, you know, high time that we started, you know, treating this with the gravity that, that exists. So I've got a list of, you know, outside of that, ten other items. I know you're all surprised, uh, that I'd like to see, you know, us kind of come to some concurrence on tonight to move forward. The second one is, is a community-wide CWPP. We addressed the highest risk location for Temecula, but the rest of the city, w- w- in Meadowview and, you know, other areas around town, still have high-risk locations that aren't included in that plan. Um, we need to complete a citywide CWPP. Um, and in that, you know, and we need to get through all of the permitting and SEQA work and everything else, because, you know, we've got a window right now with the governor's office exempting all of this because of the high risk and the urgency, but you know how it goes. You know, a couple of, you know, months later, when there isn't smoke in the air, everybody starts to forget, and all of that gets rolled back and no, no progress is being made. So we need to make a commitment as a city, and I'd like to see, you know, staff bring this back, n- n- not immediately, it's gonna take a while, but once we have a community-wide CWPP, we need to make a commitment to the annual management of that. You know, this is like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. You're never finished, you know? You're always managing this fuel and always managing this risk forever. And so we need to make that commitment regardless of the status of grant funds. You know, we cannot let federal or state grant funds dictate the amount of risk we're willing to accept as a community, you know? And the more we do this, the more we invest in it, the cheaper it gets. You know, those first couple of years are gonna be the most expensive because the fuel load is so high. But if you maintain it, it's kind of like mowing your grass. I've done that before, and I'm sure you all have, where, you know, you go a, a couple of weeks too long, and then it's a huge, you know, task for you. It's the same thing, you know? So we can do better on that, and I'd like to see us move forward with a very strategic, very clear plan, and, you know, start to talk about Measure S funds and other things should be directly applied. This is a public safety issue, so moving forward, we need to treat it as such. And the more grant funding and things we can get in the backend, fantastic, it helps offset those costs, but we need to have a firm commitment regardless of the status of the grants. Uh, the second is, um, or third, I don't know what we're at here, third, uh, community outreach and education. This doesn't work without the community. You know, you saw the great fuel reduction that's going on, but then if you look closer at some of the pictures, you've got somebody with a massive palm tree in their backyard with thirty feet of skirt on that palm tree. You know, that is the wick that moves into the community if there is a fire issue. We need to be able to work with our community members so they understand their own responsibilities on their own property, um, and part of that is just a community outreach and education piece. Um, and so we need to, you know, create that plan and start working on it quickly, especially because all that work that's being done right now is for naught if we have, you know, just those couple of, you know, uh, weak areas in the community that pose the highest risk. Having said that, I know that some folks just don't have the available resources to cut down that palm tree. Um, and I was talking to Chief Crater earlier today, and I can't remember the, it's like the one-tree program or whatever they called it.
Single-tree program.
Thank you. And, you know, and the, the, the point was, is that the community, you know, the city or the municipality was able to help for those folks who, you know, economically are, are not able to manage, you know, that risk. Can't just leave it there, we have to do something about it. Um, so, you know, educations, uh, I, I love the firewise community concept, we should definitely be moving in that direction, we should definitely be moving on creating a fire safe council, because again, that opens up new grant opportunities that don't exist for the city. Um, it also provides our HOAs and others who have large land areas to manage for us to write grants with them or, or on their own, to get the heavy equipment, the, the machinery and all that, to take care of the fuels and the management of, of that. And you could just move those, you can move those devices around to different communities, save them money, let them do the work, you know? save them money, let them do the work, you know? And it's a collaborative effort, you know? But it doesn't happen without a Firewise Community, and it doesn't happen without a fire-safe council. The home hardening, I don't know, I'm on number seven or eight now here. You know, home hardening is important. There's a lot of really good information, whether it's the IBHS models, whether it's, you know, the Firewise Communities, CAL FIRE has their own, you know, recommendations and all that. I will say again, all of those recommendations right now are far behind the actual risk that's on the ground, but they're an excellent start for our community, but we need to be able to provide the community with that information. So right now, I'm working with the with the County of Maui to distribute, I want to say it's close to 40,000 flyers, to every resident in the county to make them aware of what they could be doing on their own home. The city should be working not just on social media and providing their own version of it. Every community is unique. We should, we should be providing that to the community through social media, through our own platforms, through direct mail, through homeowner associations, whatever it is, so that folks understand what it takes to make, you know, a more resilient community and protect their own homes. The other one is the evacuation planning. Mike Alfred, you you mentioned, you know, evacuation planning earlier. That's that's such a critical risk. I I understand now that, you know, we're moving forward on, you know, the software and the opportunity, but again, it's a community outreach piece, right? Evacuation planning only works if the community is aware of what their risks are and what the plans are in the event of a disaster. The nice thing about this effort, too, is it's not just wildfire, right? This is earthquake, this is, you know, potential for flood, this is, you know, whatever types of disasters may occur in the city, this umbrella gets cast pretty wide. So this covers a lot of our bases, but that evacuation planning and approach, you know, that's something that we should be doing within every community, every HOA, to, you know, again, provide that, you know, information. The other piece, too, is the what we're calling Annual Wooey Day, you know, you hear wildland urban interface. Somebody more clever, please come up with a better title for this than than that. But but we get into this mode where we become complacent and lax on wildfire issues because we have a couple of good rainy years and the risk is low and nobody's really paying attention. Then all of a sudden, all the things you're not supposed to be doing, stacking wood against the side of the house, building a wooden attached deck without a permit, you know, having trees overhanging your roofline, you know, all of those things start to creep back in, you know? And then all of that effort, all of that work is is lost. There needs to be sort of an, and and we're working on, you know, creating this based off of the Great Shakeout model, if you're familiar, where we all pretend there's an earthquake and run around like a bunch of fools. That, you know, same model needs to be adopted, and we're working with FEMA on that, and I'd like to see Temecula adopt that. The first version of this is going to happen sometime in 2026, and I'd like to see us participate in that alongside annual training, where it's not just, you know, the firefighter's training is important, but I think it's also important to put that training inside our communities and simulate those urban interface incidents and different HOAs on an annual basis, because your perspective changes when you actually see what happens during an incident, and you actually understand when you're tagging homes and pretending there's a real fire going on, and you're not saving that house because the risk is too high and the firefighters can't get access, and they're moving on to that next house. It is important for people to understand and see that, because then they take this responsibility a lot more seriously. The the last thing I think that I'll mention is the fully fund and and support the EOC. You know, it's it, I'm thrilled to see that Temecula and, you know, the the city has done a remarkable job of growing the Emergency Operations Center, but I know there's additional things that we could be do doing to support that and providing the resources necessary. Look, it's, you know, a lot of folks will say, ah, this is a lot of money for public safety, and you're all about public safety. Sure, I am, but this is our insurance policy. You know, what we invest in today is the insurance policy for the city of Temecula. Hopefully, we never have to use it. That's the best kind of insurance policy you could buy. But if we don't invest in it and we have failed our community on any one of these items, you know, I think that's a risk that, you know, frankly, I'm not willing to take. So so those are all the items, and, you know, I don't know if anybody's been writing them down, and we'll make a motion, but those are the big ones that I'd like to like to see happen. And I know, I'm sure the city manager has some concerns and and questions about all of this, but, you know, if we're going to do this, you know, let's let's do it the right way. So I'll stop there.
I'm crystal clear on everything. City manager.
Yeah, could I could I just jump in real quick? Maybe there's more conversations that's going to be had, Councilman. You said a lot. That was a long list. I I did write things down. But if that becomes the council direction this evening, I would respectfully ask that you allow me a meeting or two to put this together in a staff report and crunch some numbers, because there's a lot of here that that frankly, I don't know how I'm going to pay for. Frankly, I don't think the council knows what it's going to cost. So the responsible thing for me would be to come back with your list, Luke's list, and we sort of say, hey, this is what we got. This is what we estimate it's going to cost, this is how long it's going to take, and then sort of take final direction. If that's acceptable, that's what I'd be like, that's what I'd like to be asked to do, and then I won't sit on this. I mean, I'll try to bring it back in two weeks if I can with my team, but at the at the least, it would it would be the meeting after that, but we'll move as quickly as we can.
No, and and look, from my perspective, it's taken California 100 years, 150 years of bad decision-making to get where we are today, right? And so we're not going to, you know, bite this apple in one, you know, chew and call it good. This is a long-term plan that we need, we need to address. And so I'm just saying, we're, let's, if we're going to take the opportunity to, you know, hit the south side of town, smash the problems down over there and reduce our risk, we should be taking a citywide look. Here's some, you know, proposed ideas. We can take our time with this, but I think there needs to be some urgency behind it to show, you know, real progress. And, you know, and yeah, and it's not going to be cheap either, and I I recognize that. And and so hopefully, you know, once we have those numbers, once we start to get a better idea of what it takes for, you know, an annual mitigation plan and so forth, we could start making decisions of, you know, how much grant funding is available, how much does the city have to shoulder, and and where can we, you know, shift, you know, that that financial burden, because it's not just us that's in this game. So I fully recognize this is a much bigger ask than just, you know, cutting down the weeds on the south end of town. So, yeah. So sorry for the increase in your blood pressure.
I'll be okay. Is there any clarification you need from Councilmember Ron's points and further direction?
I don't, I don't think I need to repeat the list. We got audio, video, recording of it in case I need to go back and watch it, but I did, I did document, and I think I saw Luke taking notes, too. So I think I I understood. So if the motion wants to be what what Councilman Ron asked us to explore and bring back in two to four weeks with timelines and with an expected price tag and explore grant opportunities where at all possible, we can do that in short order, and we're prepared to do that.
And with the one caveat that in this very short window here, let's resolve as much of the fuels management program on the south end of town as we possibly can with our partners and and other folks.
Understood.
Yeah. Would you like to make that motion, Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
I will second that motion. Has been first and seconded, please vote. That motion passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to items for future city council agendas. Do any of my colleagues have any items? Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to ask my council colleagues for some concurrents on creating an ad hoc subcommittee to look at the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library and the services and administration of of our library services. They're currently under contract. It's a contracted service, like much of what we do in the city is contracted service. But I'd like us to take a little deeper dive and and really sort of look at, you know, what are we getting? What should we be getting? What is, what do we, you know, what do we get from the county? What should we be getting from the county? I think there's, there's some opportunities to to really sort of dive into this. And and look, it's a, it's a great library, you know? We all sing the praises of it. It's a wonderful asset. I just want to make sure that we're, we know everything that's going on at the library and we're able to manage it in a way that's beneficial for the entire community.
I'll second.
I'd like to motion that. Also, if I could be on that subcommittee, since I've already began the work with Erica before, we've already kind of begun begun that a little bit and jumping in and talking to other council members in other cities such as Palm Desert, who've already had a move and a shift on what they did with their library and stuff, which was really good. So if that's possible.
I just have a clarifying question. Is the end goal of this subcommittee for the city to end up taking over the services and having it be a city facility?
That's not my explicit goal. I mean, I think you need to look at everything that's happening at the library, and that's really what I want to do. We don't know. I check out books at the library, but we don't know what's going on at the library. So I think it's important to find out. You know, I think from a contract perspective, we know what we get, right? We we can understand, we can leverage city resources better with contracts at times, but I think it's, it's a, I think it's high time for us to look at the library in a more, a little, a little more granular, a little deeper way.
So at this point, all I have is a motion to go ahead and create a subcommittee to look at library services, and that's it. That will come back on the next agenda to create the ad hoc subcommittee, and at that time, the council can discuss the scope of the subcommittee as well as the appointment to the subcommittee.
Do we, can we not just make a subcommittee tonight?
We we cannot. It is.
Peter's like, no.
No.
It was like, why not just do it tonight?
No, we have a very clear council protocol, manual, we have a very clear council protocol policy on this.
We're rule followers around here. Times have changed.
It has been, the motion has been made.
Okay, then, we will bring it back. I support that.
Sounds like there was a motion and a second. Can we please vote? That has been approved, five to zero. Do any of my colleagues have any? Mayor Protem Alexander?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. So one of the things, after being in the Economic Development Subcommittee today, what I'm proposing to the council is if we could possibly take a look at how we can conduct the meeting maybe a little bit differently, thinking about how we go about some of our funding for our nonprofits that we give out on an annual basis as well, and just see if how we're moving through what the subcommittee is working. I'd also, in that, like to see if setting some type of limitations would work for our our city and our organizations that we're that we're funding, just to make sure that we're staying fiscally responsible at all times. And then I don't know if this would be a second item, or we can actually place that under the Economic Development Subcommittee, is looking into that Placer AI that I was talking about real quick, because I know I only have three minutes or something, very strict on it. I had received an email today from a staff member just kind of going over a little bit of that, and she had recommended, she says, what they track is, let me see, we would, we did some research for a few months ago on the Placer AI. It would be a very helpful tool to use citywide. What they can track is visitor numbers, dwell times, visit frequency, and demographics for foot traffic and vehicular traffic. So I don't know if we need to do two different items on that.
Sounds like that's two separate items.
Yes, that is two separate items. For clarity purposes, the first item is for the Economic Development Subcommittee to review community services funding, the process.
Yes.
And then make recommendations to the full council.
Okay.
And so, and then the second one is to bring the topic of Placer AI back to the full council.
For the first time.
Or for the first time?
Yes.
Or to also to Economic Development Subcommittee?
That's that's kind of up to the city manager. I don't really know where that would be best be placed, and so I know it's kind of a new topic, but is it some?
Yeah, I don't think it fits into quite fits into the economic development, so I just assume that it's coming from you. You just bring it back as a receiving file for direction to the full city council.
Okay, all right, that would be great. Thank you for the clarification, Randy.
So I have a.
And I'll make a motion on that.
I will second the first and second one.
So the first vote is going to be for the community services funding review?
Do you have a clarifying question, Councilmember?
Yes, I do. So the first one, so are we, are we asking one subcommittee to oversee another subcommittee? Is that what you're asking?
No, the economics, the economics. Thank you. I'm done tonight. Economic Development Subcommittee itself.
Right.
The process on how we go upon that, that's what we want to take a look at. I'm just saying the process is different from how we do it from the the nonprofit side. You know how we have, I think it's $100,000.
Right.
That we give out annually. The process is different. And so there's just also some other ideas that I may have that I like to bring to the council to be able to make sure that we're not spending too much money and making sure that it's an economical development. It's a savvy thing that we're moving forward to do. Sorry, it's getting late.
But doesn't, doesn't that money get basically implemented by community service subcommittee that?
No, I think we're confusing different.
I'm confusing.
Reviews. I mean, we we use a subcommittee specific to community service funding, which you guys are all familiar with.
Right.
Nonprofits. Mayor Protem, I think, I think you're discussing what you sat through today.
Yes.
Which was a noticed Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. Those happen annually. Many of you have sat on those. Those involve, they happen to involve some nonprofits that fall under the economic development category, like Blue &amp; Wine, for example. There's a, there's a sponsorship agreement associated with that that we put into the economic development arena. You also have the EDC, you have the Chamber of Commerce, you have the VTV. So you have these, these multi-year budgeted, necessary conversations at a subcommittee level, and then what happened today gets folded in to the full city council for our budget preparation going forward. So what I'm hearing is you'd like the full council to understand the current process that we use for for ED funding and maybe examine changing that or doing something different.
Yes, sir.
Is that?
You got it, yep.
Okay.
Clear as mud. Let us vote. And that passes five to zero for the first motion. The second motion now, or second item.
Yes, for the Placer AI, so I would like to see that come forward just to have as an item to talk about if, I think it's running somewhere around 38,000 for three years, or maybe around 30,000 for three years, so I'd like to push that forward.
Please vote. That passes five to zero unanimously.